Hello and good evening. Today is January ninth, two thousand and twenty five. Welcome, Happy New Year to everybody. My name is Bob Green, I'm the acting chair, the chairman for the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of North Reading. Want to welcome everybody with tonight's matters in the agenda before us. Primary voting board for this evening will be myself, Brendan Riley and Michelle Bodian. I also want to take a moment to welcome the three three members that have recently been appointed by the Select Board. Those being, excuse me, Steve Carell, Matt Martin and Mark Roche. They will serve as alternatives. And because only matters are decided in a, by a three vote panel. The primary senior members, myself, again, Michelle and Brendan will handle those matters when we are at meeting. But in those moments or opportunities or need, again, Mark, Matt and Steve will be available to assist the board in these adjudications and hearings. With that being said, I'd like to open the meeting tonight with in the order of the agenda as set forth on tonight. A new public hearing submission was made. And since it is the only new matter, I'm going to move that to the first hearing matter and that being, excuse me, twenty nine Marshall Street. And with regard to the hearing notice on that. A virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, January ninth, a petition of Brooke Rogers for a home occupation special permit to run her bakery business out of her residence at twenty nine Marshall Street, North Reading, map fifty seven parcel eighty seven, attended to Article two hundred dash forty two of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Is Ms. Rogers with us tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, welcome. As is the case, if you might take a moment to discuss with us and to the the assembled parties, tell us about your application and very well, in particular, your business interest.
Absolutely, thank you, I appreciate. I appreciate the time that you're giving me at the meeting tonight. So my business is, I make homemade bread. And I'm hoping to be able to sell it to members of the community. A lot of my neighbors have been recipients of gifts of my bread over the years. And I've been encouraged to sell it. So that's what I'm hoping to do. I would love to be able to offer a porch pickup situation similar to a business in Lynnfield that does the same thing with a different kind of bread. I do have my permit through the Board of Health. And I've gone through all the steps to open a cottage bakery, following all the regulations for, like I'm served safe certified, I have my allergy awareness certificate. And all of the other cottage bakery requirements as outlined through Massachusetts regulations. And yeah, if there are any questions or anything like that, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Before we take matters from the board, is there anybody from the neighborhood, the community that might want to speak on, add to or on behalf of or adverse to Ms. Rogers and her proposed application? And, okay, hearing that. Just very quickly, Brooke, is there, do you have any? Have you made any outreach to your neighbors? Obviously, there'd be with a more formal business application, if granted for the special permit, there'd be increased activity within, around your house possibly. If that's an issue, we'd be, we'd welcome any input from, again, your conversations or outreach to your immediate neighborhood on in and around Marshall Street.
Yes, and I did submit three letters of support from my neighbors earlier today. All of my surrounding neighbors are outspoken of their support in my business. And I've had nothing but positive feedback from my neighborhood going through this process and talking to my neighbors. I haven't had any pushback.
Thank you for that. Kathy, you had, those were submitted to the office?
Yeah, she sent them out a little while ago.
Okay. I know they were trying to be forwarded before the end of the day today. Michelle, Brendan, did they show up in your box?
Yes, I received them.
Is there anything in particular within them? I didn't have, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to see them, but this is a late day. If there's anything in there that you guys might want to make a note of for the record that might be notable?
Mr. Rogers, just appears that there'll be no people coming in and out of your home, correct? And all the ordering would be done on online or through a website, they place their order when it's ready. You'd have some type of pickup box, it sounds, on your, on your porch and they'd take their baked goods and go on their way?
Correct, everything is ordered through a website. And so the only people coming to pick up are people that have pre-ordered, so there wouldn't be, you know, just people coming in. It wouldn't be coming into my house, I prefer to keep it so it would be a set container outside that I can close and keep secure. And I would only have that outside during maybe like the two hour allotted window that I would have people come pick up.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Michelle.
Apologies, I got invaded by a tiny one off screen. I guess to your question, Bob, there was three letters of support from, from the neighbors. It looks like two on your street and then one nearby, if I'm reading the map correctly?
Yeah, so two. I believe there was one that's directly across the street from me on Marshall Street. And there were two on Ashwood, and my house is on the kitty corner, Marshall and Ashwood.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So you're today?
Oh, sorry.
What kind of volume are you anticipating? And are you cooking out of just a conventional oven or is there more of like an industrial or larger size oven to cook with?
Yeah, great question. So currently my volume is like I could potentially do between fourteen and twenty loaves a week and that's out of my, I have two ovens in my kitchen. Due to cottage bakery laws, I cannot use commercial equipment. It has to be out of my kitchen. There are some ovens that are approved for cottage bakeries. But I'm not at that level yet in my business. So it's just currently out of my home kitchen.
Okay.
So under Section two hundred dash forty two, for purposes of a home occupation business, as this is otherwise, correct me if I'm wrong, going to be characterized as, you'll, will you be the only employed, the only person employed in the baking?
Yes, it's on me, yep.
And within the total square footage of your home, there's a limitation under the bylaw that no more than three hundred square feet will be used for the home occupation purpose. The scope of your business doesn't exceed that. And because it is a neighborhood in zoned as such, there'll be no display of goods, wares or signs related to the home occupation visible from the exterior, you're not going to have any signage of any note? Other, okay. I point those out because they are required again under code. Michelle, any questions? Mark, Steve? Anybody within the board?
I don't have any questions, no.
None for me.
Do you mind just walking through again the pickup process?
Absolutely. So I will offer a designated pickup time so people can choose either they can come between three and four or between four and five on a specified day. So they would basically come when I tell them, when the window that I tell them to come pick up.
Okay, so no parking, like, you know, not five cars parking, just in and out pickup from the porch?
No, and I can also limit, so I can have pickup window, the way the website that I'm going to use works is I can have, I can split it up into three pickup windows. And I can put a maximum number of people at each pickup window. So I can have maybe two or three people come between two and three o'clock and, you know, I can split it up like that. I don't envision it being much more than that, especially starting out. And I, you know, I'm also running in my own household, so I like, I like to keep it on the smaller scale anyways.
Great, thank you.
In this moment, Jerry, with your experience as the inspector within the town, do you have any thoughts or comments on just the nature of these businesses as you've seen them? This is a little bit more out of the ordinary home occupation business that the board is seeing during my time. And I'm just curious if you might have any thoughts or concerns, insights, et cetera?
I haven't seen anything like this as of yet, but I would think maybe we could possibly, you know, it's up to the board to move forward with something like this and if, and put some stipulations if there are any complaints, then we'd have to revisit this.
Thank you, I appreciate the insight. If there's anything else from the purposes of the public hearing, if I appreciate hearing it now, otherwise I'd like to see if there's a motion to close the public hearing? Brendan, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Miss Better, excuse me, you're muted, your microphone on your device.
I just wanted to, as the next door neighbor, I want to speak in support of the business and just have you hear that I think most of our neighborhood is very excited to have the opportunity to have Brooks baking on a regular basis. And I just wanted to say that I don't think it's going to be in any way negative to the neighborhood, I think it's only going to be positive.
Wonderful, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Immediate insight especially, and again, taking the time from your, your evening to help us with this. Again, if there's anybody else, I know that this, this meeting methodology might be new to people and your microphones might be muted and you're trying to make a statement or something of that sort, but welcome anything else otherwise. Okay, seeing none. Michelle, Brendan, would anybody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Bob, I had my, Mike, this is Arthur Javelis, I had my mic off for a while. Forgive me if I just joined in a little bit after you started, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew I was here to talk about Joker's Wild after.
Okay, again, that matter is, is on the agenda or not in the immediate, but thank you. Marshall Street at this time. We're going to move from the public hearing to comments within the board, Brendan, Michelle. And especially in light of Jerry's insight, your thoughts on the grant of a special permit in this matter?
Sure, yeah, let me, I move to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Michelle Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, aye.
Bob Green, aye. So again, for practical purposes, thoughts on the particulars of this proposal and in particular, again, the nature of the business as is the case with any special permit for home occupation?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
You know, you know, Jerry made an interesting point that most of the home occupation businesses that have come before us don't involve the nature of, you know, pickup activity, and it doesn't sound like that's even of any kind of concern or nature. I think that's been made clear not only by Brooke, but also this, Mr. and Mrs. Better, I believe it is. But at the same time, you know, we, these things aren't hard and fast and they often, you know, could be, so I'm just wondering if anybody has any of those concerns or the do, or there was the presentation by Ms. Rogers sufficient for purposes of making sure that the activity will be, won't in any way disrupt the the nature of the neighborhood in particular?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to memorialize what she has said will happen into a requirement to happen, so you know, the in and out pickup nature seems to me lend itself to a condition. You know, no, no prolonged parking, you know, I, I get the intent, but I don't think we'd want, I don't think the neighbors would want six cars all around the block, you know, for all hours, I don't think that's the intent here, but certainly if we said, you know, fewer than fewer than three pickups, three cars at any one time and in and out, in and out servicing rather than linger, right? I could see those two conditions being added.
Okay, thank you. Brendan, your thoughts, if any?
I would agree. Would you anticipate people parking on the side of the street or your, you know, can your driveway accommodate two or three cars at a time?
It can accommodate several cars, so one would be on the street.
Okay. I think we have, we might have some similar types of businesses like this. Bob, I think I've seen like people selling, you know, eggs from their chickens and whatnot on the, on the side of the road, so I'd imagine it a little more complex than that, but along the same lines. I'd feel comfortable just adding the provisions that Michelle had just mentioned.
Okay, thank you. I have, I, I find all the observations and inquiries made by the board as well as the presentation by Ms. Rogers to be sufficient. I have no, no concerns that haven't already been presented or addressed. So with that being said, Michelle, Brendan, unless you has anything further, does anybody want to make a motion to close the hearing on this matter?
I think I'd, I think I'd close the hearing. I guess if we want to give the new members an opportunity to share any of their thoughts and ideas before we move to a vote.
Please. Matt, Steve, Mark?
Yeah, I don't think I had anything outside of what was already said. You know, based on what she outlined, it sounds like, you know, the parking and traffic is not going to be an issue based on, you know, amount of volume over one week. And it sounds like there's a clear plan on, you know, how big things are going to be picked up. And as Jerry said, if it did become an issue in the future, this could be revisited. But there's plenty of neighborhood support around it and doesn't sound like it's going to be anything detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thanks, David, that's a great point, because in all the, all these home occupation and or special permit requests, as is anything that comes before the board, just for clarity to anybody who's new to these procedures, they're not hard and fast. Things change, and when they change, there's always opportunity to bail yourself to town hall. In this case, more particularly the building inspector and or the office. So it's always something that should be noted by everybody who comes before the board that if something changes or isn't as it had been hoped to be achieved, measures can be taken to address those concerns. Okay. Thank you, Steve, Mark, Matt, anything, any thoughts?
Yeah, this is Mark, I, I heard, or at least I saw some information Brooke had cited of a similar type of business operating in Lynnfield already, we didn't talk about the analog of that, but that's fine to me.
This is Matt, I'm okay with it as well, appreciate the letters, this is support from your neighbors, Brooke, that's always helpful to have. And I think just given the scope, the only thing that would ever really creep up, I think, would be traffic and in order for you to have traffic associated with a bakery, you're going to be outgrowing your kitchen, so, you know, you'll be in for a different type of permit at that point, so.
Exactly.
Thanks, guys. Brendan, Michelle, any motion to close the hearing and make a proposal for, for the permit request?
I believe we already closed, I would just move to, to vote, Bob.
Okay, thank you, Brendan. If anybody wants to bring a motion?
Yeah, I can. I moved to grant a home occupation special permit to Brooke Rogers to operate her bakery business out of the residence of twenty nine Marshall Street, North Reading, map fifty seven parcel eighty seven, accordance with the regulations and oversight of the Board of Health and adding two conditions that her customers enjoy in and out privileges, but do not park and linger and that traffic, traffic parking will be kept to a minimum.
Thank you, Michelle, and within that note, always the same requirements as set forth under two hundred dash forty two. That being again, as I asked, no residential occupancy shall be employed there and no other person. Not more than three hundred square feet of the residence to be devoted to the Jews. And there would be no display of goods, wares or signs related to the home occupation visible from the exterior. With that motion being made, do I have a second?
I, Brendan Riley, second.
All in favor of the, of the proposed motion to grant the home occupation special permit?
Michelle Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, aye.
Bob Green, aye, thank you, board, thank you all, board members, so Ms. Rogers, as you just heard, the special permit has been granted. Kathy, if you might recite to, to, for the record, the conditions, the timeline on the grant of the motion? Can we lose Kathy?
Sorry.
Yeah, please.
So I'll drop the motions and then I'll put members for their signature, stamp it in with the town clerk. At that point, the twenty day appeal period starts. After that period, you can commit your business certificate.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. That should close the matter. Good luck, Brooke, and again, thank you for bringing your matter to the board and and requesting the permit as you have. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Returning to the agenda for today, for today and to the evening, the continued matter on, with regard to sixteen Hillview Road. Give me a moment. A continued virtual hearing will be held on Thursday, January ninth, seven P M on the petition of James and Sabrina Colombo, sixteen Hillview Road, North Reading, map twenty eight parcel fourteen, for variance from the front setback to build in addition for the setback requirements of the dimensional intensity regulations of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Mr. and or Mrs. Colombo with us this evening?
Yes, my name is James.
Thank you. If you might take a moment, I know this matter was continued, but for the purposes of the record and the new members in full attendance tonight, could you just give us a moment to explain what's going on with regard to sixteen Hillview?
Well, what we're, what we're proposing is, my wife had investigated a couple of regulations on mass.gov in OSHA that their codes claim that the stair riser, the stair thread itself should be a length of eleven inches. The minimum amount allowed is nine and a quarter for OSHA, nine and a half actually. And our threads are all nine and a quarter. And the width of the stairs are only thirty six inches, which is pretty standard. The problem we're having is it's because of the thread being so small, it causes, in my opinion, a safety hazard between going up and down the stairs. Especially when carrying, like my, I have a small granddaughter that we babysit a lot for, and in her carry case, and I'm carrying her down the stairs, knowing the stairs are only nine and a quarter inches, I try to keep my heel as close to the rear, to the rise as I can. And it just becomes like I said, a hazard that I'm, as I'm going forward, I have to take one step at a time for, for safety. Same thing on going up. If I'm carrying something or if I'm just walking naturally, I try to keep my foot as close to the rise as possible because I don't want to have too much overhang in the rear. We're proposing to take the initial frontage of our house, which is, I don't know if you can see this, print the eyes. Right here, we're going from this point here, we're going all three feet nine inch, nine inches from the front. They're extending only to allow us to add two more steps in depth to make all our threads equally at eleven inches all the way down. And that we did by adding two more steps, we have to, we're right to the front entrance now. So by pushing it out three feet nine, eight inches or nine inches, it's allowing us those couple of steps to make the steps exactly eleven inches all the way up. And we're also proposing to change the width from three feet to four feet. To again, give us a little more extra width as we're going up and down the stairs.
Okay, and currently there's been no change in the property, so this project hasn't been stopped in any way, this is all still in it. Okay, thank. Having, let's see. Just for the sake of, question I usually ask is the the push out won't in any way affect your septic, your drainage, anything like that, it's all just basically a project that is to go forward. Did you investigate any other alternatives for purposes of achieving in this case, a safe stairwell? It's not stairway, that sounds like the real best way to characterize your, your need factor in this.
Well, our architect came up with three different plans and this one was the most reasonable, made the most sense to us, all of them involved pushing the house out a little bit.
And the other proposals would have, would it have resulted in the house being pushed out even further or just a re, a total?
About the same, the only difference was the entrance way was a little bit different, the stairs turned or the stairs went straight. Either way, he said, gave us three sets of plans, either of those, we had to move the front of the house out.
Understood. And just for the sake of my question, there was no other, they didn't offer any other alternative?
No, he, he couldn't think of anything else that could help us because No, he, he couldn't think of anything else that could help us because the stairs now end right at the door. So for us to increase the threads to eleven inches, we had to push the front of the house out to give him that extra. Two feet to add to each step as he can down, adding a couple of additional steps at the bottom. Which actually would bring us outside the front of the door right now.
Sure. Uh, was there any discussions since you, I mean, this is a practical matter and being how I sometimes seem to be. Uh, any thought to having a need to go further out? In other words, it sounds like you're going to settle on eleven inch thread, uh, tread, excuse me. Um, was there any thought to anything beyond that, just?
No.
No, not really.
Okay, thank you. Uh, um. Michelle, Brendan, thoughts, questions? Mark, Steve, Mark, Matt?
Um, what is the um? Oh, what is the exact um, amount you're looking for the total?
Three foot, nine inches further.
Oh, nine inches.
As on the plan, right there at that three, uh, four foot mark, that's where our existing house is now. We're moving it out an additional three foot, nine inches.
Okay.
That gains us two extra steps.
Thank you.
Was there any alternative? Uh, this is Mark presented in terms of the stairs, in terms of. Um, reducing the number of stairs with a different height? Maybe that wasn't feasible.
No.
No, it wasn't. No.
I'm not particularly familiar with um, Marshall off the top, my, uh, so, Marshall, excuse me. Um, with uh, Hillview for exactly where you are. Um, just for the, again, just because these questions are usually asked. I can't imagine with with the the change in your um. Uh. Like pushing it out in any way alter uh, anything substantial uh, in terms of the look of your house?
No, because what we're doing is we're taking what the face looks like now and just pushing that exact. Say that, that, that exact. Look out three point nine, we're keeping the same post and the same arc of the roof above it. So we're just like taking it and extending the whole entrance as is out. It, uh, from the front door, when we, at our new point at the three point nine. It's going to be thirty three feet from there to the sidewalk. So we're really, at this point right now, it's like thirty six and.
No, this is, this, we're thirty three now, so we will be.
Sorry, we're thirty three now, so we'll be thirty, twenty nine and three inches to our sidewalk.
Okay. Uh. Brendan, Michelle, Steve, Matt. I mean, uh, Mark, sorry.
So um, I, I drove down the street uh, when I saw this and I think it's an older neighborhood, so a lot of the houses are already nonconforming. They don't meet the forty foot setback. This doesn't meet the forty foot setback. So I think becoming a little less. A little more nonconforming in this case, you know, three feet, nine inches doesn't, I don't think it materially affects anything, so I, I don't think this one's a big deal.
I had the same thought, Matt.
Uh, any input, uh, thank you guys, uh, any input from uh, the neighbors, the neighborhood? I mean, uh, just out of, just because this is always the, um, the process. Um, did you um, did you have any opportunity to alert your neighbors of um, of your need here? Um.
Yes, we did. I sent out eighteen certified postcards and they all came back. With um, positive, not one of them came back saying they did not want us to do this.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I, I talked to our neighbor across the street to our left and to our right, who are just the butt of our properties. And all three were absolutely fine with what we proposed.
Okay, um. It's just to take a moment uh, on these matters, uh, if. You know, when you get that positive of public response from your neighbors, it's never, it's always helpful. Uh, you can always drop that. Uh, to the uh, to us at, at the town hall, so we can uh, enter that in a record, in the record, because it is. Um, it always helps to have the support of, of the community and especially the immediate neighborhood. Um, for purposes of uh, any change of any kind. But uh, so uh, thank you for taking uh, that, making that effort. Uh, it's, it's, it's appreciated. Uh, by me and I'm sure the rest of the board as well. Um. Uh, I haven't any further questions if, and it doesn't, if, unless there's any further input from the community, um. Michelle and or Brendan, um, either you'd like to make a motion to, unless you have a question yourselves, uh, to close the um, public hearing.
I'm good. I'm ready to close.
Uh.
So.
All in favor.
The public hearing.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Shaw Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Bob Green, I. So to the board, um. Uh, I'd just like to point out that the usual standard that we need, uh, request is that um. Uh, need be shown and it does sound like uh, uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. And Mrs. Columbo, uh, Columbo in this matter, um. Have shown a need, that being um, personal safety, uh, as well as obviously the safety of their family. And otherwise, within the uh, the house, as well as the fact that the stairs at the time that they were built, um. Uh, were um, you know, basically nonconforming because they were built a code at that time and. And then are, are under bylaw, so it obviously um. Uh, it was made of no note. And it doesn't sound like they're going to substantially change uh, the appearance of the. The home in uh, in this project. It seems rather um. For lack of a better word, Spartan, uh, and that they're just trying to achieve. Um, a single um, and that being again, uh, greater safety, um. Uh, that's at least, that's my read on it. Do you guys see anything else or have any thoughts otherwise? And that includes, again, Matt, Stephen, Mark.
Nope, I agree with what you said, Bob.
I appreciate Matt driving by.
Yeah, and I think the only other alternative is putting in an elevator and that would, from my perspective, be an undue hardship, so.
Definitely.
I think you've done it to the minimum extent. Three feet, three feet, nine inches is not a lot, so appreciate that.
Okay, um, Michelle, Brendan, thoughts? Or have we covered everything?
Uh, yeah, I mean, that seems. Yeah, I think the hardship is safety, no other alternatives. It's a little bit in front, like, no, no issue here. I'm ready to vote.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, anybody want to make a motion to close the hearing?
Uh, I move to close the public hearing.
Full hearing close, and uh, can I get a second? Brendan?
Uh, Brendan Riley.
Uh, vote. Uh, all in favor of closing the hearing and taking this to a vote?
Brendan Riley, I.
Bob Green, I. And Michelle, same?
Yeah, sorry, I think we spoke at the same time. Well, Bodie and I.
All right, thank. Uh, anybody want to bring a motion with regard to, again, um. Uh, sixteen Hillview Road?
Yeah, I, I can go ahead and do that. Uh, opposite one quick question, the, the draft motion that Kathy sent out requesting a twelve foot. Variance, I know we said three foot nine. I'm assuming that's because it's currently. Nonconforming and we're taking that into account, so the total overall variance would be twelve feet. Want to make sure we're on the same page there.
When I calculated twelve feet, I took the twenty eight point three, which is the overhang, it looks like.
Okay.
And from forty feet, I got the twelve, I got eleven point seven, but I thought you might give him the twelve, you know, the three inches.
Perfect.
Is that correct, Mr. Colombo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Brendan, for making note of that. So if you want to bring a motion.
Yes, no problem. Uh, I move to grant a twelve foot variance from the front yard setback to construct in addition. To the front of the existing house located at sixteen Hillview, North Reading, map twenty eight, parcel fourteen.
Uh, can I have a second?
Shaw Bodie in second.
Thank you, Michelle. All in favor of the uh, the motion as brought?
Brendan Riley, I.
Shaw Bodie and I.
Bob Green, I. Wonderful. Thank you, board. Uh, thank you, board members. Uh, so again, um. Uh, Kathy, if you could, just um, uh, for the record, uh, um, recite the uh, the uh, um. Protocol that will follow with the grant of the motion.
Uh, grant the motion, send it out for the uh, voting number signatures. Once I get it stamped in with the town clerk, the twenty day appeal period will start. I'll let you know when that expires and then you can come in. Uh, with the variance, you have a year to construct. Um, you need to have it recorded with the registry and then you can apply for your building from.
Okay, um, thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Um, so Mr. And Mrs. Columbo, I think you're all set with um, with your proposal. Good luck with the renovation to the uh, to the home and um, thank you for um. Um, filing and bringing the matter uh, in, in requesting uh, the uh, per, uh, the uh. Uh, the uh, the um, variance as um, as it's been allowed. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck. Thank you again. Have a good evening. Uh, continuing with the agenda for tonight, um. With regard to um, uh, two ninety nine Main Street, uh, a continued virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, January nine, seven P M on the petition. Of Victor Oliviero. For a special use permit to run a landscaping business to be located in the Highway Business District at two ninety nine Main Street, North Reading map. Map twelve, parcel one twenty eight, in accordance with two hundred dash thirty nine D of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Is um, Mr. Olivieri and or representative for him with us this evening?
Hi. My name's Antonio Pansini and uh, I'm trying to rent the place there so I can um, run our office and park the equipment all back.
Okay, so Mr. Pansini, um, with regards, so you're also on our agenda, excuse me, for a um. A similar special use permit, so I don't want to confuse the two matters.
Okay.
Um, especially since Mr. Olivieri, Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, when was, this was continued, what, when was Mr. Olivieri's motion brought to us? Was it? Was it October?
Yeah. I think it was November.
Okay.
Then it was December and then it was for.
Um, was he with us in November?
Yes, he was.
Okay, thank you. Uh. Uh, with apologies, sometimes there's matters that get submitted and um, the applicants don't appear and we have um. Often given a continuation without um, just to make sure that they have an opportunity to be heard without losing that. So I just wanted to be clear. Um.
Okay.
So Mr., but uh, with regard to Olivieri, uh, again, uh, for the hearing tonight, is, is. Is he with us and or is uh, is his representative? Uh, representative on his behalf with us tonight? Uh, Kathy, I know there was a note uh, within some of the materials. Have you had any input from Mr. Olivieri?
Question?
The December meeting, um, I didn't hear from him at all since then. Mr. Magazoo, I think, is on if he wants to comment on it.
I'm right here.
Hi.
So, Mr. Olivieri.
Take a moment, Mr. Mc, uh, 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 Susan, Magazoo, uh, to um, identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
I'm the owner of the property, landlord.
Okay.
Mr. Olivieri submitted a. Uh, request for permit, but he never had a lease in place. Um, he came by, had discussions, gave no deposit, had no lease. So. Which is, uh, I'm sure you've seen it before. I know I have.
Uh, okay, and um, uh, um. Since your interactions with him, was there any follow up on his behalf?
Um.
That you can speak to personally?
Uh, follow up was, you know, basically, I let him know that he's welcome to. Submit, but uh, my intentions from that time forward. Was to continue with the Pansini group. They're looking to have an office and then, you know, inventory. At the.
Okay. Not to overlay the two matters, I just want to be able to um, afford Mr. Olivieri. Uh, the, you know, the, he's still on our agenda for his matter. Uh, with his absence, uh, to the board, um, in particular Brendan and Michelle, your thoughts on this in the past? Um, we do have the power to um. To move on it, uh, to um. Move away from it. Um, your thoughts on what you think would be the most appropriate?
Sorry, just so I get the timeline, he no showed once already. Just making sure I heard that correctly.
Well, what happened was, um, and Kathy noted this, uh, his matter was on in. Uh, November and it was continued and I'm trying to remember why, but was it that he wasn't too sure of his relationship with? In this case, um. The landlord. We continued the matter to give him an opportunity to. Um.
I don't believe he had a, a signed lease yet, Bob, or had the, the space under control. He was very up in the air with his um, process, so we, we continued it. So he could enter into a um, agreement on the aforementioned property. And it sounds like since then, it has just uh, fallen off. He hasn't made any more updates or initiatives. Is that correct, John?
Uh, basically, I told him that he's welcome to continue the permit and if, for some reason. Uh, Mr. Pan, Genie didn't go forward, that I'd consider him as a tenant. We still don't have a lease.
Okay, well, so for us, uh, we couldn't come to quorum in um.
November, yeah.
In uh, December, thank you. So I'm not trying to hamstring him in the immediate, that being said, he's not here tonight. Um, the other end of this is, is that um. Applications have a timeline on which uh, we are obligated to act unless they're acknowledged by the party. That the continuation is understood by them. And I, I apologize, but we didn't take a role. Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, all the matters that were on. Agenda for December, when we couldn't come to quorum. All those parties agreed to the continuation till tonight, yes?
Yes.
Okay. That being the case, um, and since, uh, as just acknowledged, um, as an aside. Um. And again, I, I welcome the input from the board. I'm inclined to continue all of the areas' requests for permit. Until our February meeting. until our February meeting, at which time uh he either appears and moves forward or withdraws. Uh and if he doesn't appear at that time, then we will uh will uh take action, whether it's a denial of the application or what have you. Um only because again, it wasn't his fault that we couldn't come to quorum in December and uh I do understand that there's the other matter next on the agenda regarding two ninety-nine, which might decide the matter for him. But uh I can't speak to two ninety-nine Maine on behalf of in this case um uh Mr. Pansini, but uh if for some reason you know, that could have an impact on uh Mr. Olivieri, so um I'm trying to approach this pragmatically possibly and in all deference to him again just because of our unav- inter- un- unavailability for the quorum uh in December. Michelle, Brendan, uh you've been down this road with us. We've all gone through it in the past. Your thoughts?
I think that's fine. Um, we missed one, he missed one. If he doesn't show next one, then um then the matter's withdrawn. And to your point, if we hold the hearing for those that are present and the property is rented and special permit is granted, I assume he'll also not attend the next one because there's nothing up for discussion.
Same Brendan.
I I was gonna say, is the property currently rented to Mr. Panchini or?
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay, so.
He has a lease.
Yeah.
He had a purchase and sale agreement.
Would it be um prudent to table this one and um listen to Mr. Pansini's proposal? And if that were approved, this might be moved.
That was my thoughts, Bob.
Okay. Fair enough. Um, okay, um, that should make a a revisit of this within tonight's meeting just that much more simple. Uh that being the case, I'm going to um in uh failing Mr. Olivieri's immediate appearance before us tonight, I'm going to um table the matter uh to further within the agenda and instead um move on to the next one, which involves again, two ninety-nine Main Street. Uh in this case, um continued virtual public hearing held on Thursday, January ninth on the petition of Antonio Pansini Junior for a special use permit to run a landscaping and hardscape business located in the Highway Business District at two ninety-nine Main Street. North Reading, Mass, map pop back twelve, parcel one twenty-eight in accordance with two hundred dash thirty-nine of the North Reading zoning bylaws. Uh, Mr. Is Mr. Pansini and or any uh representative on his behalf with us this evening?
Yes, I am.
Uh, welcome, Mr. Pansini. Um uh if you might take a moment to um uh tell the uh board and the community about your um request for um a special permit.
All right, my intention is to uh run a office and um have my inventory, equipment, park all back.
And uh within that purpose, um uh that's, can you, is there any greater specificity, numbers, uh units, um location, layout? Uh, you know, a little bit more um information is always welcome.
Okay, on the office, I pretend to be myself and my wife, you know, she works with me and I have um I have uh another guy that helps, you know, uh, you know, drive the trucks. Will be pretty much like three of us. And uh we, I mean, I I own like no um small machines and um small dump trucks, not much. So the plan is to, you know, uh set up our office there, like it would be one or two office. Um, not many people coming in. I mean, probably like no one will come in because uh I I usually, you know, do everything myself. Uh, the employees will be like one or two guy coming in like, you know, and uh get the trucks and the machines, you know, from uh the parking lot to the work and bring back to the, you know, to the job site back to the the location.
And um I uh familiarize us uh in the in the board with the uh the property itself, um location of the trucks, are they going to be parked within a garage or behind fences or that detail is always helpful.
Yes, um the, it's a fence yard, so everything is going to be inside a fence, uh not inside the garage. Um, I don't have the garage, so it'll be like uh the trucks and the machines like now, just like uh you see the layouts there, trucks and machine out back, some cars and machines like between the office and the garage. And uh on the front of the office will be like, you know, my truck and few other cars, you know, my wife's cars and, you know, somebody's, somebody else that come in to the office will be parked in front.
Uh you so um currently, um are you, are you occupying the property? With um, as I understand it, uh you've got an agreement in kind with the with the landlord?
We we don't do work in the winter, so I I don't do anything in the winter time. I have like uh, I just have like few trucks there, like all back. Not the office.
So when when would you begin uh occupying the property? I mean, would it got happen until the spring?
Well, uh, if we got this through, like um, I gotta do a little bit working on on the office, like I gotta, you know, bring uh some office furniture there. And um I'm trying to set up myself there, Bob, like beginning of the spring.
Uh where are your trucks currently?
The the truck, the trucks is going to be parked like all back.
Right, but right now, um have you made the purchase of them? Are they just sitting on awaiting delivery? I mean, um are you have another location right now and you're bringing that operation?
I do have, I do have another location. We are, I have a location in Woburn and I have like a yard that I uh I put the the other trucks in uh to win.
And will you be giving up that Uber uh location?
Yes.
Um uh any from, anyone from the board want to um make any inquiries?
Uh would you be storing anything other than um, you notice, there's no trucks and machines, but would you have any uh materials, you know, mulch stored there, hardscape materials, loam, stone?
No, I don't want, I don't store anything like uh I get everything from the supplies. I have like five different supplies that I pick up and I dispose everything every day or, you know, every week. So it'll be just, just the trucks, the cars, machines and the office.
Okay, thank you.
And we also don't sell anything out of the office. The office is literally for computer work and paper management. There's no actual sales or people coming in and out. They just office work.
Would there be any um I guess intention, you know, you know, you don't work during the winter, but uh do you anticipate yourself doing any type of snow removal in the winter at all?
No.
Okay. I know sometimes that would require maybe, you know, storing salt or sand, things of that nature.
So it, taking you through your normal business day, so it sounds as if if the permit is granted, your crew would come in, basically park their cars where the trucks would be, go out, do the job, log, counts, come back at the end of the day and basically cars get swapped for trucks and that's how the the basically the the property is going to be used.
Yes.
For purposes of, for purposes of anything other than the the business operation that's going to go on inside of the building.
Well, that's it. Business inside will be mostly business-wise in the office, it'll be mostly me. And um he comes in and out, but other than that, that's really the major of the operations, in and out switching out of the trucks for the employees and office, it'll be majorly me and him.
Uh Jerry, are you with us? Um uh the screen is occupied by the um
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Your um, your thoughts or questions for eh again, for for everybody assembled here, um Inspector Noel has vast greater understanding of of the, of the activities that go on in North Reading. And um we very much and the community very much appreciate his counsel and insights into these matters.
Landscape use, we would just like to see that uh that the property is maintained and if you have any large, if if you have any large uh vehicles, we like to see them behind a fence. And so so it, so these vehicles are not imposing, uh especially where Main Street is a gateway to the North Reading itself.
Thank you, Jerry. Uh that, you know, the uh and uh not to not to bore you with my history with the board, um North Reading has an interest in maintaining uh the integrity of the community and every community has a business district. And in the case of North Reading, for whatever reason, in a purpose of purpose, a lot of our Main Street is occupied by um, I don't know if you'd refer to them as industrial interests, but um very much so, uh there's a lot of activity within uh residential communities that involve um in this case, truck storage and every, we do have parties that come before us that are just basically looking to find a place to 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 put vehicles and we go out of our way, admittedly, I do. Uh to make sure that North Reading doesn't become, you know, a a long road of just parked trucks and vehicles for nothing other than like to think of uh North Reading as being something more than just um a a truck depot. So uh I'm heartened by the idea that it sounds as if the vehicles will be located behind the fence. Um, it sounds, it sounds like no, not such a big deal maybe, but it does make a difference. So thank you for that. Uh, thank you for pointing it out, Jerry. Um uh anything else you want us to know about your business, Mr. Pansini?
Not really. I mean, um, we are a small, you know, landscape and hardscape. We don't do like uh any maintenance hard uh landscape. We, I only do uh landscape design and hardscape. So basically like uh, you know, summertime, like, you know, spring, summertime and, you know, fall, late fall, we kind of slow down. I don't have uh a whole lot of employees. Maybe I have like, you know, uh right now I'm with five people. So mid summer, I probably have like ten or twelve and that's pretty much it.
Um okay, thank you. Um again, John, uh Bagazoo, is that it?
Bagazoo, yes.
Thank you. I I appreciate that. Um, your thoughts on this obviously being um effectively the landlord in this matter to um Mr. Pansini and your history with the property?
So, you know, I've known Mr. Pansini for a while. Uh, actually, I sold him his house here in town. Uh it's been a uh
Hello, how are you?
He's uh, it been a good member of the community and uh has always kept his property and his equipment uh in very good shape. So you know, as a tenant, I can see that he'll be a quality tenant.
Okay, thank you. Um is there anybody else in the community that might want to um offer thoughts or opinions regarding uh this request for special permit?
You have some.
Hi, uh Mr. Karucci.
Charles Karucci. I live at three Chester Street, which is on the corner of Route twenty-eight. And I face that piece of property. Okay. I've known John since he was a little boy. The only thing I have against John, he's not doing a good job keeping that property up. All right? It's, it's a blight. You got a beautiful subdivision that is in the back of that property. You turn the corner and what have you got there? Six months ago, it was a junkyard. You got an abandoned house on the property. I don't know if you're waiting for somebody to burn it down. Uh, it's three years that it's been sitting there.
Bucky? That uh, I don't own that house back there.
Anymore, right?
I sold it four years ago.
All right, so now that I blame the Board of Appeals then. Because I know they had a big hearing on splitting the property. So my point being, I try to keep my property neat. I've been there fifty-nine years. And I would like to see you enforce that when somebody comes in for a special permit. I don't know if you got an answer for that or not.
Still, uh, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Pansini.
So that that property back there, the, that was sold to the Smiths, first of all. Uh, se- second is uh when I bought it, it was two separate parcels. So I've never joined them together.
Well, somebody did.
Sorry?
That's a, that's a commercial lot, correct?
It still is. It's highway, it's highway business, but it is still residential until it uh
They tear the house down.
Well, they tear that house down. So it can still be a house, which uh is still an option. Or somebody can go with a commercial property. I don't know which way it's going. You can talk to the Smiths about that.
My point being to the Board of Appeals, I served on the Board of Appeals at one time also. You take, you you're fair with everything that happens, but you're also going to look at the big picture. And one of them, again, like I said, you pull on that street, Pluff Ave. You got beautiful houses down there and what do you see? Okay? Never maintained the property outside. So I don't know how you're going to fix that problem. I know you got a landscaper going in there. The other thing, when John, after John bought that property, before John, that was a twenty-four hour operation in there where they stored salt and sand. I want to know if the same thing's going to happen.
No, we don't, we don't work uh after hours. I don't, um, like I say, all my material I get from the supply houses. Let's uh let's see, let's keep express, Martinelli, uh site, site one, Four Seasons, everything that I need, I buy from uh supply places.
That's fine. My point to the Board of Appeals is I would like something to put on that that says no retail wholesale sort of selling of salt or sand.
Okay.
All right. Has it set up for it?
And I guarantee you one thing, like when it comes summertime, you're going to see a beautiful place there.
I hope so.
And to maintain and make that look better for you.
You'll make the landlord look better. Now, did I hear that it's a a lease with an option to buy?
He plans on purchasing it this year, yes.
Okay. All right. So that was the big thing. I live across the street from him. I try to take care of my property even though I'm on Route twenty-eight. I chose to live there, but I would like to get some respect from the people who purchase property out there.
Okay, likewise.
And you know, I know that the tenant that was in the garage was an eyesore. I couldn't control him. The town couldn't control him. And all the lawyer, eh, I I And all the lawyer, I, I, I lost a lot of money trying to get him out of there. And to try, try them to keep the place clean. And I had to get rid of all those vehicles after I evicted them.
Okay. I know the Board of Appeals had a big thing to do with splitting the house property up further on Pluff Avenue. Am I correct? I don't know if you ladies and gentlemen were there at the time or not.
I'm not very familiar with the house.
What's that?
I wasn't there at the time, but I am familiar with that house. I'm looking at the map right now. So you're talking about Fort Pluff?
Yes. No, I know that there was land exchange to make the lot legal, okay? It, it's an eyesore. I don't know who has control. I don't know if Jerry has control? Or the Health has control? Or the Board of Appeals? No?
I don't know the answer to that either.
I'd like you to look into it. All right, you, you also got to protect the neighborhood.
Yep. It's been abandoned for how long?
Three years, John.
Five.
Five.
But who's counting?
Right. I am.
I know. Hey, again, it's I sold, I sold it four years ago. I had, I had it permitted for a house for my son and it just never happened. Co- COVID came and other issues, so.
Well, all noted. And I appreciate your, I appreciate you miss, input, Mr. Karucci, and it is on the record, and I know Inspector Noel is with, is with his attendance, is at the meeting tonight. It'll, it'll be, it's, it's noteworthy. At the same time, I'm just looking to the purposes of this petition. I will take note that during the presentation, Mr. Pansini has noted in defined hours of operation, the nature of the operation. And questions have been asked by the board with regard to the nature of the operation. Again, storing sand, delivery of product. And unless I misunderstood, those things were answered and addressed. And conditions can be put on a special permit if one is to be granted. But thank you for putting those things out. And again, in all of these matters, you import from the community new and or seasons is greatly appreciated. Is there anybody else from?
Well, can I just say one more thing? I wish Mr. Pansini and his wife good luck with their business. It'll be nice to see it looking good. And I wish them well, all right? They could come over to me anytime. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, Mark, Matt, Brendan, Michelle. Any questions with regard to the matter as it's been discussed so far?
Yeah, so, go ahead.
I would say I don't have any further questions. Go ahead, Matt.
So drove by this one as well. Would concur with the, it's a, it's a really nice looking fence, privacy fence, can't really tell what's back there. So, so that's always good in terms of maintaining appearance. I did have a question on, on what was submitted. You're going to use what's effectively the motorcycle shop now is your office, but there's also a three-story building next to it. Is that? Like, what's going to happen with that building if there's a sale? Or is that kind of, do we need to earmark that as outside of the special permit?
Right now on our lease, that's not included. So as of right now, the lease is only for the motorcycle shop where that used to be and the space in the back. In the future, if we, if the property sale does go through, then we're probably just going to keep the same setup as it is now, same rental situation. And just use the space we currently lease now as our own space.
Okay, is that, is that currently occupied? It's like a haircut place and then residents above it?
Yeah, I think it's rented, like residential on the, on the second and third floor. And the bottom, it's a barber shop or hair place.
Well, I guess will a sale just be, will that be outside of the side, like outside of the sale process? I guess my question is, do we need to make the special permit specific to the, the buildings that you're requesting here?
Well, since the sale hasn't gone through yet, I would say focus on what we're renting for now. Because that's the only place we're actually going to occupy.
And have control.
For the permit for, you know, the business as that tenant and the other tenants in that building are separate from, from what we're discussing right now.
Okay.
Any further import questions, thoughts? Mark, Jerry, Brendan, Michelle?
I have no further questions, Bob.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
What's that again?
John, when you sell that building to them, will it be in whole or will it be with like A B C? Portions of it?
A hundred percent. They'll have the whole property.
So they'll gain control of that rental and the hair, so on?
That is correct.
To the point about making the special permit narrow, is there a unit number or suite number? Or how, how have you distinguish your leases between the two tenants?
So that's considered 299 Main Street.
Okay.
Into 99 Main Street rear. The building, the white building is 299 number one, 299 number two, and 299 number three.
So this one is 299?
299 and 299 rear.
Right.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate the specificity. If there's nothing in addition from the community, I'd like to close the public hearing and move to discussion within the board. Does anybody want to bring a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Brendan Riley, aye.
Oh, Rudy, aye.
Bob Green, aye. So to the board, there's been some, some pretty helpful input on all of this. So to me, it seems from the input that was given by Jerry in terms of the location of the vehicles being behind the fences, recited by, in this case, the applicant. Without getting into anything further than what they have control over, they've defined their hours of operation, going so far as to even note noting that it's seasonal as well as the activity in answer to my question. So I'm satisfied with the presentation. I do believe there's some merit of creating or reciting the limitations, if you want to call them that, or just the, the the practical uses of the property is outlined and presented by the applicants themselves. I'd welcome any thoughts from the entire board, Michelle, Brendan, Mark, Matt, Steve.
Not having any further input.
Okay, thanks, Steve. And if, if everybody's pretty seeing it as, I think I do as well, is anybody want to turn it? There's no further discussion? Anyone to bring us to consideration? I'll hear a motion to close the, to close the hearing.
I believe we close the hearing.
For purposes of within the board. We go from public to board to
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second on that.
Second.
All in favor of closing the hearing for purposes of within the board?
Brendan Riley, aye.
Well, Rudy, aye.
Bob Green, aye. Would anybody like to bring a motion with regard to, in this case, 299 Main and 299 Main rear?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at it if you want.
And before you do, you know, and within that motion, a recitation of any of, of the, the proposal that was submitted in this case by the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Pansini. For hours of operation and the like.
Yes.
And location. Thank you, Brendan.
All right. I move to grant a special permit to Antonio Pansini Jr. for landscaping business in the highway business district located at 299 Main Street and 299 Main Street rear, North Reading, map 12, parcel 128, in accordance with 200-39D of the North Reading zoning bylaws with the following conditions. Hours of operation will be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturdays. All equipment and work trucks are to stay behind the fenced area, which will not exceed more than 15 vehicles. All deliveries will be made during business hours. There will be no overnight employee parking. Overnight parking of non-company owned vehicles is not permitted. Must conform to all Board of Health and Fire Department regulations. Signage will require a special permit. There'll be no storage of salt or snow type materials on site.
The, the, okay. And I would, as is the case with all special permits, that the special permit is granted, as recited and proposed, will stay in this case with Pansini and or Pansini landscaping, hardscape business as tenants under the the property, actually strike that, not as tenants, as the existing business interest operation there. Though by not making it transferable beyond the Pansini landscape, hardscape business. Thank you for the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor as the, as the motion presented?
Brendan Riley, aye.
Michelle, Rudy, and I.
Bob Green, aye. Thank you, board. Thank you, board in its entirety. That being the case, the special permit is, as recited, has been granted. Once again, Kathy, if you could take a moment to recite the the protocols with regard to the grant of a special permit?
Once the motion, decision has been signed by the members, I'll stamp it in with the town clerk. The 20-day appeal period will start then. I will give you notice of when that will expire, and then you can go down to the town clerk and get your business certificate.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. So thank you again, Mr. and Mrs. Pansini, for your presentation and your coming before the board. Good luck with your business interests. Also, I want to thank your landlord, in this case, John Magazoo. Thank you. And again, also the input from the community, I hope it's made an impression and it's always appreciated. So thank you for that. Good luck with, good luck with everything. And well, and welcome to North Reading. It's nice. I didn't add this, but it's, I'm heartened by the idea that you're residents within the town as well. So that's, that that has swayed with me in all of these matters. So thank you for that and good luck with North Reading. We appreciate it. Continuing with the agenda for tonight. So with that being completed, with regard to the Olivieri application for a special use permit. I don't know if this will impact that. So to the board again, do we simply correctly if I'm wrong, but there's no other space within that property, Mr. John Magazoo? I mean, is there?
There is still space inside the property, yes.
So there's a possibility that he could approach?
That is correct.
Okay. Michelle, Brendan?
Is there any stipulation in the the lease for Mr. Pansini? That states there can't be another landscaping business within the property?
No, that is not. I, in the purchase and sale agreement, he has that the space that is available, which is the large garage, is something that he's requested to stay vacant until we close, so he can decide what to do with it.
He being?
Mr. Panchini?
Again, I, thank you. This is just mostly our inability to quorum in December. I don't want to, again, in any way limit Mr. Olivieri from approaching the board, whether it's a likely decision that could possibly result or not, but that's and again, it was by agreement that all matters would be continued. So I think we're within our timeline. So Brendan and Michelle, having been on the board during the presidency of at least the Olivieri permit request, is there any thought to again, continuing it until our February hearing date with a as if effectively as a deadline for, for going forward on his behalf, on his part, excuse me?
I think it'd be equitable to continue.
I see Brendan doing so.
Okay, that being the case, all in favor of continuing the special use permit for landscaping business submitted by applicant Victor Olivieri for 299 Main Street, wherever that might, unit might be available to him until our February meeting. All in favor?
Michelle, Rudy, and I.
Brendan Riley, aye.
Bob Green, aye. So again, Kathy, if you could put the Olivieri matter over to February and make any kind of outreach to him. Again, John, if you have any interaction or interest in, in trying to see if, you know, that could be a business option for him, that would be appreciated just because.
You know, at this point, I'm going to have further discussions with Mr. Panchini. So that, you know, I know, because as a landlord, nobody wants to leave something vacant just for the heck of it. So.
But thank you. So any, you know, one of, look, let's see what happens. He'll, he'll make his call and I, I'm all fan as, as noted. I, I'm all fan as in, as, as noted by Michelle, uh, and all equitable. Uh, you know, he, he, we want to give him that opportunity. Um, by the way, uh, to the board, um, February, we do need to um, select a, a meeting date, um, as has been the practice in the past. Uh, usually the second Thursday of the month at seven PM. Uh, that would put us at um, Thursday, February thirteenth. Um, uh, as the, as the uh, uh, the voting members, Michelle and uh, Brendan, are you available on the uh, thirteen?
Um, I'm not, but I won't say that any other Thursday that month works for me, so I think our new additions to the board will have a moment to shine.
Okay, uh, uh, in all fairness, Matt, uh, Mark, uh, see if anybody, are any of the three of you available if uh, if needed for um, February thirteenth?
Yep.
I'm available.
Okay. Alright, uh, and Brendan.
I'm, I'm good that day, Bob, I'm available.
Alright, uh, so our February meeting date will be um, uh, Thursday, February thirteenth, seven PM. Uh, right now, we're gonna keep the meeting format as remote uh, with the possibility of um, of amending that, but uh, for purposes of public hearing, it can be assuredly available uh, to interested parties remotely. Uh, Kathy, if you could um, make note that um, outreach to Mr. Olivieri will alert him to a February thirteenth hearing date. Thank you. Moving on to through the agenda, um, thank you, um. Uh, our next matter, continued virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, January ninth at seven PM on the petition of Ilio Solis, sixty-one Ballard Street, Saugus, for a special permit to run a landscaping and masonry company at three twenty-five Main Street in North Reading, Mass. Map twelve, parcel one thirty-two. Uh, is Mr. Solis with us? I thought I noted him earlier.
Yeah, you're on mute.
Oh, okay. Mr. Solis, you're showing up on screen, but your microphone is muted.
Okay, I think it's on. Good night, everyone.
Hello, how are you? If you might take a moment um, to tell the uh, board about your proposal for a uh, special uh, special permit for purposes of uh, your landscaping and masonry business interest. What are you looking to do at, at three twenty-five?
Yeah, uh, sorry, I, I didn't hear that. Um, yeah, we were trying to just park the trucks there, uh, I guess I meet Jess and uh, I asked him to let us park the trucks. Um, as uh, we, we used to park in, in Saugus, but they sell the place, so I, I meet him there and he let me park the truck, but and then he asked me to, the city was requiring special permit for it. So I would like to, you guys give me the opportunity to park the trucks. What we're doing is just landscaping, masonry, hardscaping, all that stuff. Well, we don't keep uh, stuff there, so we always keep the things clean and then the place clean too, so.
So other than the locating of trucks, what else is gonna be happening at three twenty-five Main?
Sorry.
Uh, other than just trucks being parked there when they're not on job site, is there any other use of the property?
No, it's gonna be just for parking the trucks, uh, our landscaping trucks, uh, masonry, trailers, trucks, equipment, so we just need the space to park, uh, we don't use nothing in stock there. So just come in and out.
Uh, how many trucks are you talking about?
Uh, I think we have uh, five trucks for now there.
And uh, what other equipment and or um?
Well, we have that uh, sorry, bulk cut machine and a trailer for uh, maintenance and like I say, we do a lot of masonry and hardscaping, so that's all we use for equipment.
And I, uh, I'm the owner, I'd like to also said that he uh, will have an office uh, in the building as well. My name's Jesse Jelbert.
Jelbert, how are you? Uh, so current, they're currently occupying the um, the property? They're using it now for the same purpose, they're coming to us for special permit.
Yes, correct.
Uh, is uh, so the location of the trucks, is it in a garage on the property, is it on an open view, is it in the rear of the building, I, I, you know?
It's uh, they're in the rear, rear of the uh, of the parking lot, uh, and they are technically in an, in the open view. Uh, there is no fence there right now.
Thank you Kathy for the, the, the plan, so those, uh, excuse me. Those, are we talking the, the line spaces?
The back shaded, back shaded spots where the mouse is right now.
Okay.
Those four spots, there, there's six there, but two of them were for another gentleman after, after Elio, but the first four right there. Um, and I, we've never really discussed a fence. I didn't, you know, know if that was gonna be something you guys wanted or required, but you know, I'm, I'm open to putting a, a fence up there to, to hide the vehicles per se.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so just for the record, uh, within the building itself, are they going to have a any occupation or use access?
Y- yes, there's uh, another one of these um, plot plans that have the office location on it and I, I think I might have sent over the wrong one, um, so I, I do have that and can send that over to you, or if I could figure out how to upload it onto here somehow, I could, I could show it to you right now, but if you look at those back set of stairs, there's like a little L-shaped stairs.
Okay.
Right up there would be, is his office, will be hit, will be his office.
Okay, um.
Are the shaded spots we're talking about, is that the grass? I'm looking at Google, Google image aerial, like I'm having trouble placing this, there's the pavement and then it goes on to grass, so it's the grass spots.
It's the, the grass uh, stone area, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Kathy, I just sent you the updated um, plan there, if you wanted, if you have the ability to, to, if you need to show it to people on there.
You send it to my email?
Yeah, just, just click send, so it might take a minute.
Uh, while we await that, um, not to confuse the matter, but there was a um, submissions um, put into the record from Community Planning CPC, uh, dated December ninth, twenty twenty-four. Um, regarding three twenty-five um, Main Street. Uh, and essentially CPC noted there are two applicants for this address, it was not clear on which business was proposed. And exactly what location, uh, that was their only comment. Um, I have, I don't think anybody from CPC was, is with us tonight. Um, I don't know if that in any way was the vagary, um, might have been prevented them from having any input with regard to the application, so in past CPC has uh, counseled on matters in particular to the board. Uh, things they want to establish or achieve and or take notice, if not deny or show no support for something or support or support condition. Uh, in this case, um, I think the fact that two applications came into them and they didn't know, didn't understand the nature of the application, um, led to that, which I just uh, noted for the record. I'm pointing that out to the board in particular because um, we do take all input from not only the community, but the other um, boards and committees in the town, commissions, um, in consideration. Uh, Jerry, thoughts on uh, three twenty-five Main? From your, um.
Hey, from, from my perspective, I think you should speak with um, your alternate, Mr. Martin, he's done some uh, quite a bit of extensive research on there. He was in speaking with us today and uh, I would like to have him speak on this first before, before I do.
Excellent, uh, thanks Jerry. So Matt, um, I know you submitted some inquiry and thoughts on this.
Yeah, and I think I'm more confused now than I was earlier, so when you talk, and thanks Kathy for bringing up the shaded spots. Um, when, when I see a ten foot by sixty-two foot area, I'm thinking maybe a couple trailers, but uh, Elio mentioned five trucks and a bobcat and it's, it, I struggle to see how all this equipment's gonna fit back there. It's also in a floodplain and um, you know, it's not, it's not in wetlands, but it's, it's definitely in a floodplain and could get pretty mucky, so I guess, I guess the question is like how, my question is like, what are we giving a special permit to, right? Is it, is it two of these hash boxes, is it four of these hash boxes, is there a way to which it sounded like Mr. Jelbert, you're willing to fence it in if necessary. Um, I think it's important to, to screen and as we noted earlier on two ninety-nine Main to, to screen stuff that's visible from the highway, so that would be, I think, a benefit to this application. But it, it's really unclear to us and it sounds like it was unclear to the CPC in terms of like what we're approving tonight. So is it, would, would Elio have two of these squares and Mr. Goddard would have two of these squares and then someone else will have two of these squares?
No, uh, Elio would have the four that are shaded in red right now or outlined in red.
Okay.
Which is where, if you, I think you went by there, if I heard correctly, um, all the equipment he has is there right now, so it's there and it fits there.
Okay. Yeah, so my comments more, more along the, the, the ability to screen them, which isn't there now, but to the extent it can be there, I think would be helpful to the application.
Oh yeah, yeah, definitely we could screen them.
So, do you own the property?
I do. I bought it a few months back.
Okay.
I don't think this is anything different than how the property was previously used or used by the previous owner um, in years past, but there has been, you know, a lot of discussion and ask about, you know, fencing off all things on Main Street, so I think that will go a long way.
Uh, Jerry, um, having had conversations, uh, your thoughts?
Well, I had the previous owner remove uh, the boats, he had storage, he had uh, gas cans, he had, and we, we, that's a resource area, um, meaning a floodplain area. Um, that becomes uh, an issue with that respect, but right now we're looking at a use. So as the members are saying, if this was screened, um, I think that would be definitely a betterment to the property, also a betterment to the town. Um, as I mentioned before, this is a gateway to the community. Um, and then secondly, once the use has been determined by uh, ZBA, then uh, the, then the uh, petitioners would have to um, then move forward to go to um, uh, conservation and speak with them to see what they'd be allowed to do because of the uh, flood, floodplain area. Thank you.
So Jerry, uh, thank you, uh, with your experience on that, um, and having seen this before from other business interests that might wanna do the same. You know, what, what, as inspector for the town, what do you think is the best way for that area to be used as it's, it's been described? In other words, we go with best and or worst case scenario, you know, it's gonna be trucks located there that are gonna be moving in and out, not just during dry season. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Solis, your business is year-round?
Yes, we uh, we work uh, not only local, so we look at it just in and out. And can just say there, so. But I can say, so. I don't know what is that, the owner is there, so. But for me, it looks, uh, the place is, it's a, enough, enough space there, everything, so our workers too, they park the, the cars at the same place when the trucks move out, so we keep it clean and all that stuff.
So, you know, is there a way to fortify that area? I mean, as Matt's so, you know, stuteously pointed out, uh, given that it is on a flood. Um, you know, Jerry, your thoughts on this? Have you seen it before where people have you know, all along good intention, but only made it a situation worse purposes of um, practicality, if not functionality. And that they just keep digging up the same ground.
So.
Can it be overcome?
What are you, what are you asking with that scenario?
Well, what do you, what would you, other than the fence, is there anything else that could be considered in, in grant of the permit that might best serve not only uh, the use of the property, but the town interests?
Uh, that's a, that's a difficult question to answer, to be honest with you, uh. The only thing I would have to, have to say, uh, in rebuttal to that would just be size of the vehicles. Um, you wanna, you, you wanna make sure that whatever you, you're putting in here in your screening, um, basically uh, once again, it's a gateway into the community. So um, this, and this could be seen off of Main Street. And uh, as a, as a kudos to Mr. Jalbert, who was the owner, he has basically, when I, when I basically first sent him the, the order, this cease and desist, he, he was extremely responsive. And it was uh, email after email after email, which uh, which I can appreciate and uh, thank you for that, Mr. Jelbert, appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. No problem.
Are other people allowed to speak on this matter?
Yes.
So I'm coming up next because I parked next to Mr. Solis's equipment. And I have rented there an office in the building at three twenty-five for four years and I've parked three trucks and two trailers in the back for four years. And as far as the floodplain, the flood issues go on that property, everybody who knows anything about North Reading knows that the floods exist when they exist are from the back of Boston Flower Market. That's what floods. This property, three twenty-five Main Street, never floods. And so the back of that property, so we, I park my vehicles there. I don't store anything, I don't do anything. I run a landscape business, yes, I parked three trucks, two trailers, and I have for four years and I have an office upstairs. That property never floods, and I don't believe, I'm a, I'm a local North Reading guy. I raised my kids here. I don't believe that property's ever flooded, but the back of Boston Flower Market, when there's a flood, always does, so I don't think that's really a matter that needs to be in this conversation.
What's in the conversation is the use, the use. What's in the conversation is the use, the use. It's just we, we, we are basically. Alerting everybody to the fact that this is in a resource area. That's all. So you're taking this beyond where, where, where it should be. Your comments need to go to the conservation, not to us.
But this, this guy who's trying to get this permit is the same as me. We own landscape companies. We park our stuff there. We don't have any materials there. We don't have salt. We don't have sand. We don't have mulch. We park our stuff there. Our guys come early in the morning. They grab the trucks. Actually, most of my guys drive acts directly to the job site, so we don't have that much. Interaction with vehicles, whatever. And eight hours a day, we're gone and. For half an hour in the morning, half an hour in the afternoon, we're back.
Your brain, Josh.
Was that a question to me?
No, I'm just putting it back to you, Chair Brain.
Well, again, thank you, Mr. Goddard. You know, the, the point being made here is that. It's a fair question to be asked. I thank you for your input. I mean, your, you know, four year history and never having experienced that, but again. As Inspector Noel pointed out. Even with the grants of the permit, it still goes to conservation. So, you know, these, as. As was noted by. Board member Martin, I mean, if it, it, you know, it is defined as being in a flood. Flood area and that has to be considered. Now for practical purposes, yeah, okay, fine. It doesn't. But at the same time, my inquiry was just one of, great, let's put up a fence. But at the same time, you know, maybe that. You know, there's one thing to put up a fence to, to create a. To create a, a better. Visual, but there's, you know, does it also hide a problem that should also be addressed? That might not be one that's to be answered by you, or in this case, Mr. Solis. It could fall to Mr. Jalbert. Or it could just, you know, be something that the town has to keep in consideration. That's why I was reaching out, but you know, thank you for making the note. I. I'll take you at your representation that you've been a long time user of the property and you haven't experienced. A problem. With regard to the fence, however, you know, I think, I think I can, you know, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but. You know, how big, what, what are we talking about for truck sizes and units? Or purpose, like what is that, what is the fence achieving? You know, do we have to? To the board, is there any consideration that we have to decide? Or if anybody could give me an input as to the nature of that fence, like what kind of a fence, the height of a fence, I mean. These things are all. You know, this is where this is going to go because I, you know, to the credit of Mr., to the owner of the property. He's not put off by the idea of putting up a fence. Thank you for that. But we do want to make sure that it achieves the end result, which is just to create a, a good impression of the property. Not only for. For the community, but for people that are coming into the community. Either way, is there anybody else from North Reading? Other than the applicants and or. The owner with us tonight that might have thoughts on. Three twenty-five Main Street and the, the uses that have been permitted, the uses that have been. Applied for. If you are, please join us in the conversation. And again, to the board, any, any further questions for Mr. Solis and or in this case, Mr. Jalbert? Is it Jalbert? No, not Goddard. I mean, in this court, order, Jesse.
Yeah, Jalbert.
Jalbert, thank you. Does anybody else have any thoughts or questions or? Considerations that might want to be brought out at this time?
Yeah, you, you brought something interesting up, just the, the overall height of the fence. What, what type of trucks? Talking just general pickup trucks, dump? Dump trucks, box trucks?
I, I can speak and tell instantly about this because I also do fence work, but if you put up a six foot white poly fence. That'll last forever. All of my trucks would be below that height. Mr. Solis has a couple trucks that are slightly bigger because they got, because he does tree work, but. For all intensive purposes, you're, you're hiding everything that's back there.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, like a six, six foot fence as well.
Jerry, you have a lot of experience with fences that have been put up by business interests of the town. Your thoughts, six foot?
The building code allows up, allows up just to a seven foot, seven foot fence. And then anything over that, if it, it becomes taller than seven feet, then it becomes a, a structure. So then you have to get an engineer involved. So. I think that they would have put up a seven foot fence, but they, they need to make sure that whatever is behind that fence is. Is basically safe and it's going to be safe for the environment as well. So. But once again, it's the use that we need to make sure that we're protecting the environment.
And by use, you mean the effect on the. The property itself?
Correct, correct. I don't, I don't think Mr. Jalbert is looking to compromise anything. I think he's just looking to. Make sure that he has a fair share is, I, I guess what you want to call a business. So wrecking a fence, I think would be the proper way to do this and I think a seven foot would, would be better, would be best and. Once again, I want to refer to Mr. Martin if he has any, any other input.
No, I think that, I think the screening is the big concern, right? This is one of the first things you see when you come south from Andover on twenty-eight and I think. Having it be a parking lot is not what folks in this town want to see. So if something screened is, is what we care about.
Well, for the sake of the, the application, not being the owner of the property. Mr. Solis has no control over putting up the fence. So it's, I'm not, again, it had. I, I think with the board, for purposes of the Solis application, we're limited to. The use of the property by him. So. So. I think the record, the, the conversation is clear for Mr. Jalbert and. Even with his input and acknowledgement. A fence would be greatly appreciated, but so the applicant has no control over. Putting that fence up. He's not the owner. That's a different matter and not one that's before us tonight. So if we go to the limited use of the property. I appreciated Mr. Goddard's input. Are we going to talk about, you know? His activity on the property will be limited to the number of spaces in the square footage of those spaces. You know. I apologize, I'm not that familiar with how big a truck, a tree and or landscaping. Interest might have or use or employ, but. I'd welcome anybody's input as to how big a truck is he going to be able to. Have and use on the property if it's just, even if it is just to be parked. During off business hours. Please, I'd welcome any input from anybody with especially insight into that.
The, the, his trucks would be dump trucks and, you know, single rear axle trucks that are. Twenty, you know, twenty feet. He, you might have, he might have wanted a little bit longer than that, but. You know, if you think about like a standard twenty-six foot box truck, they're, they're shorter than that.
The typical parking space, Bob, is roughly like nine by eighteen, nine by twenty. So he has ten by sixty-two here, so. Parking them pretty much tandem. But obviously box trucks and larger vehicles would be. A bit larger than a standard car SUV.
Right, well, I haven't. This is, again. The saving grace on this is. You know. The construction of the, two things, the location of the trucks being on the rear of the property. More so than on the face of, of twenty-eight or twenty-eight main. And the idea that a fence is, is going, it would appear is, is being agreed to by. But again, a non-party. So. Unlike the prior applicant, who was putting his trucks behind an existing fence, it gave this board a great deal more confidence. In the outcome of that special permit, that fence doesn't exist right now. I'm not denying that it very likely will be constructed, but. You know, as the chair, I feel and for the board, we should feel a need to. Have some amount of certainty because failing, lacking that fence, I can't say that. You know, I drew, I draw an impression that the board wouldn't be inclined.
Bob, if we granted the special permit, that it be in a fenced in yard?
So to that, I, ideally, sure, but can Mr. Solis and or Mr. Goddard be responsible for? Generating that fence? The permit would, that. Stipulated, stipulated permit puts a condition upon a party that. Has no control over that. So it's, yeah, sure, we can do it, but is it fair to the applicants, both Solis and Goddard? As opposed to, you know. One that's already existing. I know, it sounds like I'm splitting here. I apologize for that, but this is. I speak to this because I have the longest history on the board and. In prior hearings throughout the duration of my time. There's all, and Jerry can speak to this certainly, as can Cap. There's always been a continuing interest in trying to make sure, for lack of a better way of phrasing this. That Main Street just doesn't become a parking lot for trucks. Okay, and while the business interests in North Reading are limited by North Reading. For a lack of a better way of thinking, it still exists and, you know, thank you, Matt, because. You know, your understanding of going by and actually taking a look at this property, I've been by that site any number of times in the past too. It's an interesting idea. A fence helps a great deal, but these part, these two individual applicants. Can't control that. I believe it's going to take place. I'm not looking to continue the matter, but. The one thing we can control is the use of the property. We have a defined area within which the, the trucks and or vehicles are going to be parked. We, I'm sure we'll stipulate, they'll, that'll be a condition and stipulation as well as the use and parking times. But I can't say this enough. That fence doesn't go up. You know, what becomes of, of this permit? Now, last point on this, we can put a timeline on the permit. And that would afford Mr. Jalbert an opportunity to, to. Construct the fence and a simple motion could be, a, a simple revisitation could be made to extend the permit time. I mean, so they get the ability to continue their business practices as they are currently being done. And it gives us the chance to come back and make sure that. The community interest is served. Lack of a better way of phrasing it, offenses. That's just my thinking on this. I'll welcome anybody's input. Thanks.
I would like to give a little bit of input. I think your feedback was outstanding. As a long-term member of this community, you know, I will work with the landlord and we'll get the fence up. It is very cold. So you can't put a fence up when there is frost in the ground, but I will work with the landlord to make sure it is done. In a very prompt, you know, it might be, I don't know, April first, that type, that type of timeframe, ninety days, depending on the frost. We'll put up the fence and let the business owners continue to do their business, which is a benefit to the community.
Mr. Goddard, Chair and Oil Building Commissioner, I, I totally agree with what you just said. The only thing is, is you'd have to make sure that you'd have, you, you go before the. Conservation and just make sure that the site plan, which will be CPC, doesn't have any issue. But, but. Once again, agreed.
Thank you, sir.
Apologies. So is there any more? Input from the community, the applicants, any parties not within the body of the board that would like to be heard? Specifically with regard to. The permit application to ninety-nine Main Street attendant to Elio Solis.
Three twenty-five.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. These landscaping interests, three twenty-five. Thank you. I appreciate, I always appreciate being checked. It's all good. Is there any more? Otherwise, if there is none, I, we can make a motion to close the public hearing. And put it into discussion with the board. Would anybody like to do?
I, Brendan Riley, move to close the public hearing.
I'll second, all in favor of closing the public hearing.
Brendan Riley, aye.
Bob Green, aye. Great, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Within the body of the board, all members, your thoughts? It would appear that I draw from this that everybody's okay with. Granting a, a special permit to. In this case, specifically Mr. Elio Solis for three twenty-five Main Street and I have every. Belief that the same. Permit will be. Heard if not granted for three twenty-five Main Street for Mr. Goddard. But. It was raised in the hearing that, you know, a fence would be ideal. We are in winter and I, again, appreciated the input. That showed that it can't be done until, let's call it early spring at best. Is there a thought, anybody's thought as to how to. Condition or. Make use of the permit, not only for. Timing the immediate, but specificity with regards to the property itself, that being specific. Lines, demarcation, if you will, of the area that will be used for the trucks. And or vehicles. And if measurements are needed and asked for, I'm, I'm sure that we can get them from. Either the submitted drawings and or the parties themselves. So the trucks don't suddenly start getting parked in different areas on the property just because.
Yeah, and that, and so no objection to the use, right? My main question was, they're going to park in a box. How do you mark the box? And the easiest way to mark a box is with a fence. To the extent that we can, you know, pass the special permit. To the dimensions that are requested in the application. I think that's the best way to go about it. And then those dimensions to be fenced at a later date, I don't know how best to, to timestamp that, right? When conditions allow or once approval, once approved by CPC and Conservation Commission. No later than X days.
We're talking a privacy fence, so it's not visible from the street, not. You know, a four sided fence, because obviously you're three sided, so they have to get the equipment in. Privacy fence, so just one line of fence.
I was thinking the same thing. It's, you know, the, the concern's visible from Main Street. No one's really looking at it from the back.
The question that's been raised is, can we figure out within the property itself that is that.
Sorry, Bob, we lost you.
If there is, exists a legit, a topological, a dimensioned um map that shows how many, you know, feet from either the sides or the end or the front of, in this case, three twenty five, to create the this, the defined area on the property that these trucks are going to be parked. Because it doesn't sound like they're in marked spaces. I think, Mr. Javert?
Yeah, oh, yeah, they're in, well, the the spaces aren't aren't marked per se out there on the on the the gravel dirt area. But with the fence, uh, we we could do that for for sure. And it's it's laid out on that that drawing, but we, you know, get it a little more specific if you want to see something else on the drawing.
I think we lost Bob.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, we keep raising.
All right, I'll keep talking while it's gone. I was picturing a fence, um, you know, it looks like from the directional, just along the, you know, the west side of where the parking, the boxes are shown on the site plan. Um, so a fence parallel, parallel to that, what were others thinking for a fence?
Yeah, it, you know, across the whole front, across those six parking spots and beyond, there's a few more parking spots to the right. So a fence that goes through the across the whole front that has gates that would open up where they where they would back their vehicles into. And then the left side, which is kind of up against Boston Flower Market, could have another fence running down.
Yeah.
Blocking the side view.
That's what I was picturing. And I mean, if it helps, well, we're all talking here, I quickly just pulled up the FEMA um flood map and the North Reading map. And it looks like it is uh outside of the um the flood zone. I mean, obviously Conservation can speak more clearly to that than I than I can. I checked it quickly and the FEMA map can be a little dicey sometimes trying to measure it online, but um that if that does help, we might be okay there.
So if I insurance standpoints on the property, too, when going through all that and getting insurance and underwriting, it it is it is outside of the
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Javert.
So if I could just give us spec of input, if the the fewer gates on the front of the property will make it much more attractive, so if we could potentially work with the landlord to all exit out the left side and not have a fence there, because nobody from Main Street can see behind the fence on the left side through Boston Flower Market. So we can, we can work on that, but a bunch of gates in the front so people can go that way is very less desirable than us pointing out, instead of our trucks pointing towards Route twenty eight, they would park towards Boston Flower Market and exit that way out of the property.
Well, I think if you're coming down from Andover on twenty eight into North Reading, you can certainly see it from the Boston Flower Market side. So I think that would be my
The fence.
Concern with the fence, yeah. That's the side we're talking about.
Right, but you you're not so I I don't think you need a fence down the left side. I I, because Boston Flower Market hides it when you're coming down Route twenty eight south.
Yeah.
I just think it would be more attractive of us exit out the left side of the property than a bunch of gates in the front. That's all I'm saying. James, can you see the image on the screen?
Yep.
You're talking about the spots that are not shaded where you're you're slated to park coming out over there?
No, so if if everybody in that property exits straight towards Boston Flower and comes out that way.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Rather than having a bunch of gates facing the the building, it will be far more attractive. And is all we need is like an exit. So either right next to the fence or right next to the woods. We can't park there because that's where people exit. So it it just, it's it's much better. It's much more
Yeah.
Good looking. You know what I'm saying?
No, I I agree. If if we can configure the way the vehicles are parked and exit towards Boston Flower Market, um, yeah, we could do one fence with no gates.
Shaded, if you look at the shaded spots and you put one gate, they can't get out of one gate. Because there's a bunch of shaded areas that would have, it's much, it's it's much easier to just do a nice, attractive fence across the whole property. And then people who park there exit out on the left side and go out in between three twenty five and Boston Flower Market. That's my opinion. I I do this a lot. And when you drive down Route twenty eight, you cannot see, because Boston Flower Market is there, you cannot see behind the left, the left side of that fence. No way.
Yeah, I don't.
Willing to do whatever it takes, but I I'm I've been doing this a long time. A nice, beautiful fence, no gates, no nothing, scoot out the left side. All of us, there's there's no activity on this property except for one half hour in the morning and one half hour at the end of the day.
Uh, Bob, it looks like you rejoined. Are you able to hear us and? My last year again? Yes, not. Um, I I agree. I don't think you could see it from when you're driving from Andover. Um, I would be satisfied with just one fence line on the west and you can figure out if you can get an easement from the flower shop to drive over their property to exit or not, but I think at least one uh, one privacy fence just straight across.
I do a lot of business. Them I think that agree. But, yeah, we can figure that out.
Um, anyone have strong feelings about more than one uh one direction of the fence?
No.
You know, um, you don't have to. If you want to close the hearing, that's fine. And then you could go out and maybe mark the site and then make your decision. Um, we don't have to do it at this meeting, but just in case that helps.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
And Kathy, is Bob in touch with you? Is he trying to get back in or is he?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please, thank.
Can you hear him?
Yeah.
Okay, so I apologize. I'm trying to overcome some tech problems. Uh, it seems to me is if the the fence, I would, I think the will be both these matters along because it's the same way. If somebody wants to define an area within the the property in which the use can be um, defined, restricted, whatever word term they want to use. And an understanding of the fence will be we, my potential would be to kind the permits out. Um, afford the chance for the fence to be constructed. And once it is, then I think we can revisit them for purposes of just extending the permit. Places the owners got on the applicant tonight, but on uh, the property owner and the uh, the only thing they would be under the permit for was the restriction of the location on the property where they're each going to respectively park both to their benefit and inherently the town.
I got some of that, Bob. Um, did anyone else hear him more clearly? Okay, um, I think I was hearing you say that the fence can be decided outside of the context of the special permit before us tonight, I think is what you I heard.
What I gathered, it's on the honor for the fence. This gives them the permission to continue business.
That's what I thought I heard as well.
That's what I
All right, you're doing great, guys.
But that's up to the total board. It's not up there. It's not up just one.
Yeah, and you know, understanding we're putting stipulations in here, I just want to be clear to the applicants that if we're limiting this to a sixty, it's basically sixty foot by sixty two feet, whether that's adequate. Right? Because we don't want you to, I mean, we're trying to put a box in there, but we're also adding a fence now without a gate. So is like, would you need either wider or longer?
In my opinion, that's adequate. And we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Anybody ready and able to make a motion? Technically close the hearing and then make a motion.
Hi Brendan Riley, move to close the hearing.
Second, all in favor of closing the uh hearing and taking this to um consider uh to vote within the board?
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara, I. Thank you, board. Uh, would anybody like to bring a motion regarding, in this case, three twenty five Main Street special use permit for landscaping business for applicant Elio Solis?
Uh, I can.
Okay. Please.
All right, and what I was gathering was we're gonna drop off the condition related to the fence and we'll deal with that separately?
Um, that's fine. Um, just for purposes before you make your motion, that the board retains the right to revoke a special permit with ideally cause. I'm not trying to, I think a lot of, I think something is about to be achieved here for the benefit of both applicants and for the town. But again, um, uh, I don't want the idea here that we're all set and you know, the the construction of a fence suddenly becomes an afterthought that doesn't be realized. But again, that's not their responsibility. So, Michelle, if you might.
I move to grant a special use permit to Elio Solis for landscaping a masonry company in the Highland Business District located at three twenty five Main Street, North Reading, map twelve, parcel one thirty two, in accordance with section two hundred thirty nine D, with North Reading zoning bylaws with the following conditions. Hours of operation, eight AM, five PM, Monday through Friday, eight to one PM on Saturday. Uh, all deliveries made during business hours that are just stated, no overnight employee parking. Overnight parking of non-company owned vehicles is not permitted. Have to comply with all, conform with all Board of Health and Fire Department regulations. And then noting signage will require suffered application and permit.
And is the case with all special permits, it will stay with the applicant. It will be non-transferable by um to any other party. Thank you. Um, all in favor of the motion as uh put forth?
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara, I.
Michelle, I.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, um, Brendan. So, Mr. Solis, um, the permit has been granted for you to use the property as been uh defined uh for purposes of parking your trucks and the uh, and as the record reflected by your by your application, the use that you defined there, too. Kathy, if you could take a moment and uh inform uh Mr. Solis of uh what the the process will be after tonight.
The motion will go out for signature. Once I get it back stamped with the town clerk, the twenty day appeal period will start. After that period, you'll be able to go get your business certificate.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Mr. Uh, Solis, again, thank you for coming to the board with your petition and your patience in uh in the application process tonight. Um, and again, um, uh, just so I know I uh had some technical problems, but I just um, you know, how your permit is for how you use the property within the the square footage of it and for for the location of your trucks. And we're strongly uh encouraging you and effectively permitting you as you um uh discussed with us tonight. Good luck with everything. Uh, have a good evening. Uh, our next matter, um, Continue virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, January ninth, twenty twenty five at seven PM, the petitioner James Goddard, uh, one resident three four oh nine, Tewksbury, Mass, for a special permit to run a landscaping business at three twenty five Main Street, North Reading, Mass, map twelve, parcel one thirty two. Mr. Goddard, good evening. I know you've been uh involved in the conversation regarding the prior matter, so guiding the same look. Just take a moment and um just for the record, recite what your special permit is seeking, again, at the location of three twenty five Main Street.
Uh, well, basically, it's the same as the matter before, but I've been there for four years. I've rented an office in the building for four years on the top floor and I have parked my three trucks and two trailers there for four years, and I just wish to continue the same.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, any input from uh the community? Uh, I know Mr. Uh, Javert is uh your landlord. Uh, do you have anything to add with regard to uh Mr. Goddard?
No, I don't. It's um exactly what he said and uh, no, nothing new.
So, Mr. Goddard, um, what you got? You did note in the prior uh hearing that you don't have as many uh trucks and as large possibly uh as those of Mr. Solis. Uh, is that a fair characterization of your your business interest?
Uh, that is correct. He is a young man. I am an older gentleman. And I'm gonna retire sometime in the next couple, two, three years. So I'm not expanding. I'm just trying to do business. I've been a long outstanding citizen of this community. My boy has graduated from North Reading High. My brother has a excellent business in this town and I do great business with Boston Flower Market and I wish to continue to do the same.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so how many vehicles are you talking about?
Three trucks, two trailers.
Okay, and um
So that's, that's to be more specific, that's two pickup trucks and a small uh dump truck.
And I assume you're comfortable with the arrangement that exists now um with you and Mr. Javert?
Hundred percent. He's an excellent landlord, excellent communicator. And hundred percent, I think he's a great asset to the community as a business owner, a new business owner or a new new landlord owner, if you will.
And uh, and your relationship and sharing of the area that's been defined on the drawing uh with Mr. Solis, no problems there?
None whatsoever.
Uh, is there anything else you want to add before uh, you know, before we turn this over to the board for questions?
Honestly, the you have a new business business owner uh as a as owning the the property. You have Mr. Solis who's new to that property. I've been there for four years. We're a great asset to the community. That's plain and simple.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Goddard?
I have no questions, Bob.
Yeah, no further questions now.
Helpful during the prior one.
Excellent. Matt, yourself?
No, no questions. It's been, I appreciate the input.
Great, thank you. If if that being the case, seeing no further input from the community and or the applicant, has anybody within the board like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Hi Brendan Riley, move to close the public hearing.
Second, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I.
Michelle, Bodie and I.
Great, thank you, board. Consideration by any members of the board. And if anybody wants to just use the word ditto, it's fine with me. I still understand what that word means. But I think it's very much the same as the prior matter and I'd welcome anybody who feels the same and or differently.
Yeah, I'm ready to vote in ditto.
Okay. Anybody want to bring a motion, close consideration by the board?
Hi Brendan Riley, move to close.
Barbara and I, second, all in favor of closing the hearing and taking this added to a vote?
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I.
Michelle, Bodie and I.
Great, thank you, board. If anybody could and would like to bring a motion regarding, in this case, three twenty five Main Street on behalf of James Goddard.
You know, so we don't have to rock papers. I moved to grant a special use permit to James Goddard for landscaping business in Highway Business District located three twenty five Main Street, North Reading, map twelve parcel one thirty two, in accordance with section two hundred dash thirty nine D, the North Reading zoning bylaws with the following conditions. Hours of operation eight to five, Monday through Friday, eight AM to one PM on Saturday. All deliveries will be made during business hours, no overnight employee parking, overnight parking of non-company vehicles is prohibited. Must conform to all Board of Health and Fire Department regulations and like the previous one, all signage will require separate application and permit.
And again, as with the case with all special permits, if this permit is granted, it will follow and stay only with the applicant, in this case, James Goddard, for his use at the property defined that being three twenty five Main Street and effectively non-transferable to any other party and or individual, even those within the property at three twenty five Main Street. Can I get a second on the motion?
Brendan Riley, second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion as before?
Michelle, Bodie and I.
Barbara and I. Thank you, Brendan. Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Goddard, the motion passes and carries. The special permit is granted as defined. Please keep in mind, and thank you again for your input, but please keep in mind, as was the case with Mr. Solis and is the case with all of these matters. It was noted on the hearing, within the hearing, how you're going to use the property because you don't own it, you only rent it, your permit is only effectively for the parking and location of those vehicles therein. And again, as I noted, you know, the permit is that the at the grant of the of the town. We'd encourage you to work with if not maintain an eye towards making sure that the property the fence that is has been discussed at length is put in place and add something not only to the purpose of of the property, but also to the benefit of the community. Thank you. If you might, Kathy, if you could recite for Mr. Goddard, what will go, how the matter will go proceed after tonight?
Once the motion is, the notice decision has been drafted. I'll send it out for signatures. Once it comes back, I get stamped with the town clerk, twenty day appeal period will start. I'll let you know when that expires and then you can go get your business certificate.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Mr. Goddard, not only for your help with your own matter, but also the overall matter regarding three twenty five Main Street. And I see you're still with us. Thank you as well, Mr. Jalbert, for your input. And again, so much of what has been done and created here is regrettably, I mean, not regrettably, but understandably is contingent upon the fencing of the area so as to you know, limit if not you know, eliminate the view of the trucks as they are kept in off hours and not when they're not on property. So you have every hope as that you'll be able to make that construction in addition to the property when the the time comes and we would be in, we'll give you the opportunity. Thank you.
Absolutely. The fence will go up. Appreciate everybody. Thank you. I would also say that having never participated in one of these meetings before and although at you know, very boring at times, I appreciate all of you and commend you on your dedication to the town and what you did tonight because, you know, I've I've never participated in this. I've never experienced this before. And I think all of you who are representing the town of North Reading should be commended for your excellence.
Appreciate your support and and kind words. Have a good evening and good luck with with your business. Last matter on the on the agenda for tonight. For a continued virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, January ninth, seven PM, and the petition of Arthur Javelas for a special use permit to run auction in estate sales, retail sales of new and used items and hold music events at two oh four Main Street, North Reading, Mass. Map twenty three, parcel thirty one. Mr. Javelas, are you with us?
Yes, how you doing, Bob? Good evening, everyone.
How are you? Apologize for the late hour. We've had quite an agenda tonight. If you might take a moment to tell the board and the community about your plans for in this case, two oh four Main Street.
Yeah, certainly, Bob. I did have a narrative I wrote up. I sent it to Kathy, so I didn't know if it may be easier for her to put that up. Yeah. This is, yeah.
You don't want to have the board, so if you just might, more specificity with regard to two oh four?
Yeah, I sent one recently just before the meeting. I don't know if she has that one.
Did you send it in the email?
Yes, Kathy, yeah.
Yeah, hold on now. This the one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the outline. Mr. Javelas, if you might. You know, I appreciate the input that you submitted, but there also has to be an understanding of the actual day to day operation of the use of the property.
Yeah, sure.
It's got a very broad range and I'm wondering if you might be able to better define, if not narrow it, the business plan, the the situation of the the interior of the of the property. You know, management of it for the different purposes. I mean, just for you know, the previous owner was just a retail store and nothing more than that longstanding. But again, just a retail store. That's not what you have submitted here because you've shown or or asking for an array effectively of different use and purpose. So if you could possibly give us a better understanding.
Sure.
The business plan.
Yeah, yeah. No, thanks for that. I I understand it's it's a lot, there's a lot of going in a lot of different areas. I can see where that's confusing, Bob. The general idea is to have a retail store of new and used items. And the thought being that since I'm a licensed auctioneer would be like maybe once or twice a month as items get stale to maybe just blow them out on a Saturday or Sunday auction. It's not going to be like a daily thing. It would most likely be daylight hours on a Saturday or Sunday. And the primary use of the store would be, you know, like from a ten AM to ten PM type thing of regular retail sales. As far as the live events and things like that, myself and my whole family are musicians. And we know a lot of a lot of professional musicians. There's going to be literally hundreds of guitars, amps, effects, recording equipment, things in there as well as tools and electronics. And, you know, people are going to be picking these things up and playing them and and stuff like that. And the reason I included the live events was because I thought it would be a good idea to maybe have some professionals to attract people into the store that could do a small performance or a signing, you know, inspire some local musicians, you know, maybe some school kids and things like that, have lessons. And then maybe to ultimately use the center area of the store as maybe an educational forum from time to time to do lessons or seminars and things like that. But the the auction type thing and the estate sales would not be a day to day thing, you know, maybe there would be a viewing during the weekend, one area of the store or something like that, if we had an upcoming auction. And then we would do this most likely on the weekends. And I I don't even anticipate anything happening for months. But I just wanted to kind of put everything out there that we were intending to do. So, you know, we wouldn't just do it and then say, oh, have somebody come down and say, you know, we never, we never allowed this, you know? So that's, I guess, in general, what we're doing. I'd just like to add that I appreciate the townspeople. You know, having the pride that that Main Street is a gateway to the city. I agree with that before. This is my first town meeting online and I did everything I thought I could in advance to try to spruce up the front of the property. We did some some stonescaping in front there, some painting and things like that to make it look a little bit more attractive. And that's my intent to do that moving forward, to be an asset to the community and to keep the name of the building. Because to me, you know, that's basically, that would be taking that sign down would be like taking the Coca-Cola sign off the Charles River, you know, so everybody knows where that building is. And when I bought it, I actually had it in the PNS that I could keep the keep the name. So if you have any questions, be happy to try to field them for you.
Thank you. Is there any is there anybody from the community that has is still with us or joining us that has thoughts regarding two oh four Main? And if not, I welcome any questions or inquiries, thoughts from the board members and and then Inspector Noel.
What would your anticipated hours of operations be?
In in general, I think, like I said, probably ten AM to ten PM. But the reality of that is I I probably couldn't be there every day from those hours to start. I mean, it would be nice to get something up and running that far. But for right now, it'd basically be me and maybe one other employer, somebody to help me because I really don't know where where the business would be going at this point as far as how much business we're going to do. Hopefully, it's thriving and, you know, we can, we can do a lot of business and and attract people over there and and from other towns to to also take advantage of some of the budding businesses, resources, food and whatever.
Jerry, your input thoughts? Is it, is it is it controlled by this board under two hundred thirty five in particular?
Retail works as is right. He has a right to have a retail. The entertainment part, which is the music, your music end is, doesn't show anything within our zoning bylaws, unfortunately. I commend his vision. But I've been asking him for months, get me something from a a design professional as to how he's going to accommodate for any type handicap people if he plans on having retail in there. I've yet to see anything from him. And I also have some questions about, we we has a mixed use now. And he has permits. I gave him permits to install three bathrooms. Well, those three bathrooms were installed handicap. But yet he still has other issues he has to, he has to take care of. So there's a lot of unanswered questions for me. So I think the board would need to take this on to from there. And I think Matt Martin, once again, has done some research on this because he was in my office today asking him what he was doing. So I don't know, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, my main concern with the, I guess, with the number of people that would come with the with an entertainment use is is parking and whether, because that building in particular is really hard to park on the main street side because you'd basically be backing out into the highway and there's only seven, eight spots along the side road. Do you also buy the the dirt lot across the street? Would that be part of this use or is that separate?
No, we, no, we have, we, Matt, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have twenty one parking spots, Matt. I do know Mr. Seraphini, who has the lot beside us. I'm in communication with him. I'm also in communication with Rusty, Mr. House across the street. He has eighty one plus parking spots. And I I do have a letter from him and I'd be willing to submit that, that said he would let us use those additional spots for an auction should we need, provided that we provide the insurance and hold him harmless for any liability, which obviously we would not be doing it unless we satisfied those conditions. So we would have, in total, we would have over a hundred parking spaces basically that we would have access to. He had only asked that on the weekend we we wouldn't park cars on the right side, I guess, where Andrea's Pizza was. He owns across the street where Andrea's Pizza is and the building way back.
Yeah.
Yeah. And to, and I just want to comment on Jerry's point. Jerry, I totally agree with you. Thanks for meeting with me. And I'm not sure if you're aware, but I've had a a conversation with Jason in the interim. And I do have Mr. Philip Tebow on board to give me some quotes on the on the architecture. He has been over the property. And I'm waiting for his feedback to give me an estimate and hopefully move forward to get some kind of idea of what we have to do to satisfy those conditions for the ramps and the other things. I have been trying to get in touch with a structural engineer and I've got somebody on board as well from your list there that I will be meeting with. So I I have been taking action on the list that you gave me and hope to get you guys something back soon. As far as Eddie goes, the gentleman that we hired to do the three bathrooms, his his sheet rocker, we're we're pretty close to finishing them uh because the place really didn't lend itself to uh serving the public so well with one bathroom there. So I decided to uh put uh three in instead, a new and handicap accessible. Um and uh his man has just been out sick. Uh they plan on be being there either this uh Saturday or the following week to finish up. So hopefully, we should have a lot more uh positive uh feedback for you as far as finishing that up and and uh what we can do with the uh with the uh for the auctions, you know, because I want to understand capacity uh and things like that too. And of course, we would only do things that would be legally and conforming with the town. I hope that answers any questions. You know, that that's also that's should cover the residential unit that was in operation for twenty-two years up above that I know of from the owner and I believe one of her roommates. So uh again, I'm waiting on the architect to see what's uh what's legally uh conforming uh so we can submit something.
So is the residential unit staying there?
I'd like it to. It's been there for twenty-two years. That's where she lived right up until I bought the building. Yeah.
Yep, I was just curious.
Well, the the problem with the residential unit, and I as I explained was was the fact that now it becomes a mixed use because now he has purchased the building and he's making improvements to the building. Um and that's why I've asked him for an architect to be involved. I don't have the eight to ten hours to work on that one particular project. So therefore, he needs to get a design professional involved and review the code. So that's a matter that would be outside of the use matter. It's still use matter needs to be determined because he's here at the board trying to find out what he what he's going to be allowed to do. Um and the entertainment section, I don't see that in our zoning bylaws. I'm not personally, it doesn't matter to me what he does there, but I'm just looking at what we have within our zoning bylaws. Um and uh once again, uh I hate keep keep going this, but Martin also has has done some research on this as well.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Jerry. And again, I have Mr. Philip Tebow uh trying to render something uh for me as far as an estimate and then we'll move forward and hopefully get something to get soon.
Jerry, oh, sorry, would a would an auction house technically be considered a place of assembly at that point? Where people are gathering gathering there or where does that cross crossover? Now that's a different.
It's really, it's it's going to, this obviously has to be a gathering if there's going to be an auction, but it's not going to be a daily thing. Uh primarily, it's going to be retail sales and you know, on the weekends occasionally we'll have an auction.
Yeah, but I mean, to that point, the church is weekends and it's a place of assembly.
That's that's one of the reasons why he needs to have a design professional involved.
Right.
Make these determinations. So it's very difficult to determine and I hate to say this, but it's very difficult to determine the use until you actually determine what the design professional is saying, what is allowed in accordance to MASH general law six forty-three. And then within our zoning bylaws as well.
Yeah, we want to, that's why we reached out to Mr. Tebow, Jerry. We you know, also, we want to understand the capacity because we don't want to put anybody in danger or anybody's going to be in the building at any time. We certainly want everybody safe and everything accessible. So uh again, I'm I'm working on that to uh to finalize that with him.
So Jerry, you said role references, Matt, to um conversations, the thoughts you've raised. Is is there anything in particular?
You know, we started this meeting off with Brooke presenting like letters of support from her neighbors. So I don't know, have have you reached out to the surrounding neighborhood? I don't I don't think they'd object to the retail use that has been there for decades, but I think once you bring entertainment till ten PM into the equation and you know, music that could be heard, whether there'd be any objections from that because we think we probably want.
I don't know if we'd be doing music till ten PM, but you know, it's uh it's it's a great idea. I mean, I uh I thought that we kind of covered that by putting the send in the mailers out to the eighty-eight or eighty-six of Butters there that they were, they would be aware of the meeting because it was pretty it was pretty uh clear in the in the proposal what what our intent was, you know. So I would I would imagine if anyone uh wanted to comment on that, they they're probably here tonight, you know. But I could additionally would be happy to go out and knock on some doors and and get some feedback as well.
I think based upon, like, I'm super confused on what's being proposed. So I don't know how it's clearer in the mailer.
Okay.
So I mean.
Your answer is the simple
That's how I feel.
Specific definition. It's also a question of, as Jerry has pointed out, because I've looked at the bylaws as well and I'm trying to find the entertainment um component. And I, you know, when in the past, when the bylaws have been either lacking, unclear, um undefined, um you know, you can go to the general law uh or you can go to code or you you know, we can avail ourselves of town council. But even if I take this to town council, it's still a question of definition. So respectfully, Mr. Javellis, this is, it's an ambitious idea. But the board works it it might seem like just nails based tonight, but we're we're here for definition and there's concerns, there's any number of things, I mean, that go into this. I I raised the question to somebody earlier today. Just other than somebody playing a guitar in the uh horseshoe. Uh I I mean, I don't know of any quote unquote entertainment venue um in town that you know, charges for an admission. There might be somebody playing and I understand also, please, if I'm not hear that, you know, if you're selling musical instruments and somebody comes in and says I, you know, I want to, can I, you mind if I play? And suddenly, that's impromptu. It's not planned. I mean, there's I I I just the that I I, you know, obviously a bit, my my obligation, our obligation, is to look out for the town interest. And in that regard, it just has to be, there has to be greater specificity. I'm not seeing it and I'm not trying to stonewall anybody or stop anything I mean, to fruition, but um I for my purposes as a voting, I need to see something more, not just something more in ideas. I need to find um lines and and I know that the there's an odd thing about how the this these matters get resolved in town. They come to us zoning first to see if we can get a permit. Now that we've given you a permit, now I go to building and I build it or I go to conservation and there's there's this roundabout way of getting if zoning is not going to allow it, then why should I be trying to construct, you know, ramps and or access accessible, you know, bathrooms or what have you? That I understand. That's why, as Jerry has noted, going to near uh somebody with design work and laying this out. Because let's face it, I mean, if you're going to if entertainment is going to be allowed, there's going to be sound systems and sound systems do just that. They create sound. Well, even though it's a business district, there are interest on the edges of the visit, uh you know, how are they going to be impacted? And what about the business interests to the left or the right of that? So this is why, all due respect, um you, there just has to be more on paper for the in a practical manner and and so to that end. Um you know, that's where I'm I'm sitting right this moment. And I have been since I first took a look at the proposal, um the application for your this month.
Yeah, no, I definitely get you, Bob. Um this isn't going to be, first of all, it's it's not going to be like the Blue Ocean Music Hall or TD Garden. We're not going to be selling tickets for events. It's going to be primarily retail store in the center. We'd just like to have maybe some folding chairs or something like that uh as a way to attract people into the store, you know, to maybe see a small performance and probably do some shopping and things like that. Um as far as the bathrooms go, uh the intent of the bathrooms was definitely not for a musical venue or anything like that. Um when I bought the store, I noticed that there were two two commercial entrances in front. Uh the store sort of lent itself into being separated into a smaller and a larger store, which is why we put up a partition wall and why we added uh two extra bathrooms, one for the smaller store and two for the larger store. Uh just to basically accommodate uh anybody coming in the store. Um I I totally hear what you're saying and and we want to understand capacity and things like that, too. Um I I I think you all bring up some great points and I'd like to reach out to the neighbors behind there. I mean, across the street, it's pretty much commercial. Uh beside us, it's pretty much commercial. There's there's a few neighbors uh I think to the rear there. That's where the residential starts and more than willing to go there, even knocking door to door or send them letters and uh find out, you know, what their what their idea is. Uh you know, we're we're not looking to uh you know, put on heavy metal shows there. There uh I I think it's going to be, I I I think, I I appreciate your concern, but I think the reality of it is it's going to be a lot lighter um than probably your worst fears. And I would be willing to even uh have you approve it, you know, conditionally that it doesn't disturb any neighbors. Um because that's that's certainly not our intent. I mean, we we don't want to disturb neighbors, the town or or anybody because that's that's just hurting business and it's hurting the town and that's that's not what I'm about.
Uh Ford.
Go ahead. So well, what I read in your write-up, um it's pretty clear what, you know, you're you're trying to do um for me and you know, from what I read on the highway business district uh section in the zoning, I mean, it does may mention amusement and recreation activities, which I would interpret as entertainment. Um so there is something in there, but you know, as as Bob and Jerry both said, it definitely needs to be more on paper to describe and visually show. Uh but I don't think anything you're doing is different than, you know, some what we see on other businesses down Main Street. Um it it's not like you're going to be there till midnight with a liquor license and there's going to be people everywhere. This is, you know, entertainment. There is a music store down the street. Um you know, they they do music lessons there. Um you know, there's several of the businesses down Main Street that, you know, have live music or a DJ, things like that. So nothing so far seems to be different than anything else.
Yeah, I I can remember, you know, many years ago, going to the horseshoe, doing open mics up there, you know.
Yeah.
Used to have entertainment there. I'm 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 unaware if anyone else is doing that. I know that the uh bar up but uh up by Dunkin' Donuts there, I I've seen a few bands play there. I don't know if that's still happening. Um but uh you know, that's uh, you know, it it's not what we're trying to do there. We're not, we're not trying to do like a regular concert schedule or anything. It would strictly be, um you know, hey, come on in, you know, this this person or this band's going to be here for whatever, half hour, an hour, come in, check it out, check out the equipment, you know. Or uh on the weekend, we're going to have an auction and over in this section, what's going to um be at auction, you can come in during the weekend and look at it. And then on the weekend, we'll we'll if we're going to do it, uh provided we we have the insurance and everything for uh Mr. House across the street, uh we'll we'll try to uh not only accommodate the parking, but you know, very clearly discourage the parking on the side streets because again, we don't want to disturb the neighbors. I would put signs out there saying, please don't park here, park across the street or something and and let people know when they came in the door.
Like you're keeping the sign in the name.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I thought it was, I thought it was a great idea. I mean, I I I tell people, they say, well, right, I'm a two or four mainstream. Where's that? You know where the Joker's Wild Building is? Oh, yeah, I know where that is, you know. So I said, you know, that's ridiculous to to take down something that's part of the history of the town. I'm I'm all for that. You know, I thought it was really cool. It's a cool man, too.
Yeah.
Did your architect give you a timeline for when he can have something for us to review drawing wise, plan set wise?
Not for the actual uh drawings yet, Brendan. He told me by the end of the week, this week, he was going to give me an estimate. And um you know, assuming that I agree with that estimate, we're going to move forward and and I'll have him render something at his earliest availability. You know, because we would like to know excuse me, you know, first of all, what we need to do to make the place safe. Uh and secondly, and secondly, what would be a legal uh a po- a public capacity there so that we're we're doing everything conforming?
I think in the absence of that, it makes it very tough for us, the board, uh and you know, Jerry to uh make a decision in that regards.
Yeah, no, I I can respect that, Brendan, and I I certainly uh uh don't want you to, you know, uh don't want you to uh move on anything that's that's unknown. And I and personally, I would rather wait uh until we get something official. Um I just kind of wanted to give you guys an idea of what the intent is there and totally uh want to understand myself too, because it may not even be worth it to do it if he says, oh, you could you only have twenty-five people in here. Well, it's it's not worth it to do that.
Certainly. Would it make sense, Kathy, to maybe just continue this for for update? Bob, I don't know if you agree with that?
I would think it makes sense to maybe get a layout and talk about where he plans on doing each event or something.
Yeah. I would agree.
In the meantime, maybe I can, I'll I'll reach out, you know, uh try to reach out the end of this month and the beginning of next month to uh some neighbors, probably at least three or four houses in and and get some get some feedback from them and maybe get some uh some letters from them uh if that helps.
Yeah, so I think our next meeting we have is uh, we say February, is it February thirteenth, Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah, do you want to want to push it for an update on that date, Bob?
That's fine with me. I think it's um, as you probably have noted, it's most practical. And at the same time, um you know, the sooner you get your your proposal together, um and we'll make a more specific use definition. Um it would afford us the ability to to look at, look it over in advance of the meeting so that we can have a more um a a more effective conversation. Uh Kathy, since uh at this time, do we have any other matters pending for um February thirteen, other than the Ole, Mr. Olive Oliviero?
That's it.
Okay, um that being the case, if you could put two or four Main Street, Main Street at the uh the first matter, um I mean, after Oliviero, um which I don't, I mean, practically speaking, I'm I'm sure that we'll have a better, a more clearer understanding of of his um possible special permit request so that um we can afford Mr. Um uh this the two two or four Main Street um uh a timely and uh uh full hearing. But again, I I can't stress this enough. The more definite, and this is uh Jen Platt, um uh oh, the prior chair of the board had said it any number of times, um the board very much and always greatly appreciates um specific, definite, if you might even professional uh submissions. It just makes it not easier. It just makes it that much more efficient and effective. So thank you.
Bob, is is it, my understanding, I know both issues are important, the uh the uh estate sales, which is you know, it's kind of could be part of the retail sales anyway, and the entertainment thing is is the uh sound uh the the largest issue beyond the, you know, legal capacity of the people that can be there? Is that uh what you're most concerned about or?
I think the way you have to approach this, quite frankly, is the community itself. Now, granted, it's in the business district and there isn't a lot um of residential directly touching it, but at the same time, uh, I think you have to approach this as, you know, you, you should you're best served covering everything and, you know, um, since you'll only be in proposal states and you'll be dealing with, um, very likely, as Jerry pointed out and encouraged, a design professional. Uh, they'll be able to, to create your cost factors, you know, uh, for purposes of, you know, sound management, if that's volume control, however you want to think of it. But at the same time, you know, Matt made an excellent inquiry. I mean, you noted that you have some twenty some odd parking spaces, but for those of us who have lived in North Reading and have used or gone by that address any number of times. I don't see where those twenty one spaces are. You don't have to show them to us now, but a, a well-defined layout of the entire operation down to time increments and planned calendars and you've got experience in auction at matters. All of that is only to your benefit and to ours in terms of giving the you know, the application, um, a, a really good, good consider, a, a fair and reasoned, if not encouraged, that consideration. So my suggestion is sit down with people, put stuff together, submit it and just get it to us. The soon, once Kathy gets it, she turns it around to us. So even if it's, you know, the first stage of a, of a, of a plan. Hey, it gives us a chance to look at the first stage. So the second stage is coming and at the same time, thoughts and feedback. Um, we'll obviously be able to come from that. So in short, uh, yeah, I mean, I think you gotta consider the sound. I think you gotta consider the timeline. I think you have to consider the parking. Um, Jerry's excellent point, it's gotta be accessible. There's no way, no way around that. Matt's point is excellent. Where are you gonna park? Uh, not just park, but not, not create, but go ahead, Matt.
Sorry, Bob. So, and I think the people immediately behind you, that, that's who I would be worried about, because I don't think people are gonna park across twenty-eight and go across four lanes of traffic. They're gonna park in their neighborhood. And so if there, if there's twenty one spots and you've got an event with forty people or fifty people for an auction, that whole neighborhood is gonna be lined with cars and they're all gonna be calling Uptown Hall saying like, what is, what's going on here? So I think that's, that's the, the concern.
Right. Well, you know, I, I, and I, I agree, I agree with both of you guys. I think, you know, uh, like I said, I am in communication with Mr. Seraphini who has the abutting lot, so hopefully it doesn't involve uh people across the street there. Um, and I will reach out to the abutting neighbors. Uh, what I wanted to, and, and as I said, uh, um, the neighbor across the street has eighty additional spaces. I mean, if it would involve a police detail for safety to do that, uh, if there was parking across the street, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. Again, this is not gonna be an everyday thing. It's gonna be a temporary, one day thing, you know, may, maybe another day for pickup or something. Uh, and, and the pickup probably wouldn't involve a fraction of the people that, that were at any auction. Um, where, where was I going? Uh, oh, that's what I want to ask. I mean, an architect is obviously not a sound engineer. So uh, I would like some sort of guidance of how many feet back do you think would be reasonable for me to approach some of budding neighbors, a hundred feet, a thousand feet, a quarter mile? I, I, I don't know. Um, but I mean, that building, there's not a lot of room for sound to escape. I mean, there are a few windows on the side. There's a solid door on the back. Uh, the, the part with all the glass that would really radiate any sound is on the front. Uh, there, there are two or three. There's, there's a few windows on the side, but I mean, it's, it's pretty quiet in there.
So not to interrupt you, I mean, all of this, I, you know, is what you need to take from tonight. Start your, your processing, your outreach, your consideration, your plan, get it on paper. Submit it as it comes and gets completed. And again, keep us appraised. We'll, we have you on for February thirteenth.
Okay.
You know, um, you know, outreach can be made to town, uh, to, to the building office. And um, you know, they'll, we'll do our best, but again, and if the thirteenth is just too short a window, don't hesitate to ask for, you know, we, we meet monthly. So that would be, that, that's where I think we're encouraging you to go. So um, by agreement of, of the applicant, we're gonna continue this matter uh till um February thirteenth and um, we await and uh look forward to um revisiting this at that time.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense, Bob. And, and I should know from the architect, uh, the design professional, but thank you.
Okay. Good luck with it and we look forward to um seeing you um in February. Good luck.
Can I make a, can I make a public motion to give all, all the town officials a raise for staying out so late with all of us and putting up, uh, you know? Is that, is that okay?
Beautiful. Uh, we just, we just want to get, we, we're just trying to get stuff done and um we'll, we'll meet with you again in February. Thank you. Have a good evening and good luck.
You too, sir. Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it.
Uh, thank you. But um, with that, um, we'll put the minutes over because it was part of a, a continuation that preceded this. We'll deal with that on the next meeting. If anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I, Brendan Riley, move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Brendan Riley, aye.
Shalva and I.
Barbara and I. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. See you um, February thirteenth. Uh, any problems, issues, questions? Um, board members, um, feel free to give me a call and uh, obviously, thank you Kathy and Jerry as well. As always, can't get this work done without the two of you.
Yeah, goodbye.
Thanks, everybody.
Happy New Year.